Good morning, and welcome to everybody that's here and anyone that may be viewing online or on TV. I call this meeting to order, and let's have our roll call.
I think Mary's had a hold of this one.
Blame it on me.
Please rise for the dedication.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity to gathering together this morning as a community. We pray that you might be with us as we do the business of the county focusing on the budget for the next year. We pray that you might give us wisdom, help us to make those decisions that would please you and those decisions that would be the best for the people that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Let's face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion on the agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Manager, we'll start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to the board and to the audience, and to welcome you to the fiscal year proposed budget for 15, 16 budget workshops. And the presentation I'm about to embark upon is...
Something wrong with you.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yeah.
Again, good morning and to the board and to the audience. We'd just like to, as I was saying, going to embark upon the budget presentation for fiscal year 15, 16, for the overall operating budget and the general fund operating budget. Couple of housekeeping items you've got before you, two documents. One is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that's on the monitors. There might be a little bit of feedback in the room. Second, you've got a binder that I will cross-reference that shows some of the stuff on the screen in larger detail, even in additional detail that you'll find in the binder. Just wanted to review, reviewing the binder, first of all, on page one, the budget calendar for the remainder of this budget planning. Obviously, today is the presenting the overall balanced budget and then hearing from a couple of departments. I believe we have the sheriff following and then the Board of Elections. The rest of this week, tomorrow, the board will be going, some of the board members, we will not hold budget workshops, but some of the board members and staff will be going to Raleigh for the County Assembly Day at the General Assembly. And then the following week, the 11th through the 15th, is held for optional budget workshops if needed. Traditionally, we have not had to have held that week of workshops, but we always put on the calendar just in case if things get complicated. On May the 18th, will be, at your regular meeting, will be the manager's recommended budget and budget message to use the board and the public. Then on Tuesday, June the 9th, you have scheduled a public hearing at 7:00 PM here in the Commissioners' Meeting Room to receive public input from the public regarding the proposed budget. And then we have scheduled for June the 15th, if you don't, you have the option of adopting the budget on the June the 9th, but if you receive, traditionally, if you receive a lot of public input, you normally then delay the adoption, so you can think about that input if you want to adjust the budget. So then you could always come back June the 15th if that is the case to adopt the budget. The latest date you have to adopt the budget is June 30th, because we have to have a budget into effect by July 1. So looking at the PowerPoint presentation, a couple of slides. The first one, on population growth, just wanted, just to illustrate that obviously we are a growing county. You can see that we've got in 2025, projected population of 191,145, just under the 200,000 mark. Today, we're at about 178,000 total population in Pitt County. Economic indicators, just some of the things that we have observed in Pitt County as it relates to the overall budget. We've seen our local sales tax up. We're projecting, or there's projected a 3% to 4% statewide growth in sales tax. I believe Mr. Holder reported at the last meeting, we actually had seen 13% in our last monthly period. It's kind of an anomaly, but 3% to 4% statewide. Unemployment rate is down, we're at 5.6% as of February, down from 6.5 a year ago. We've seen an increase in the property tax base, which we'll talk about. We see interest rates continue to be low. And in terms of announcements from the Development Commission, in the past year, we've had two major announcements, Patheon at 500 jobs, investment $160 million, as well as we've had several other smaller announcements as well. On the next slide, your priorities is set by the board, and you reaffirmed these back in January at the CIP Preliminary Budget Workshop. I'm not going to read each of these statements, but they are education, safety, economic development, health and welfare, facility and space needs, infrastructure and recreational activities. So when we as staff work with the department heads to develop the budget, we try to keep in mind what priorities you as a board have set, and these are in priority order, education being first, public safety, and so forth. So that's how we try to filter the entire process. On the next slide, in terms of focus areas for the budget this year, so we have your goals, your priorities on that last screen. In terms of a budget focus this year, we've coined the term "human capital," and we had made a presentation earlier in the year to you to talk about examining the possibility of reinstating pay-for-performance. Basically, that is the evaluation system in which all county employees are evaluated on a semi, an annual, semi-annual and annual basis. And then based upon that performance review, a score is derived, and then that then determines if employee is eligible for pay-for-performance. We'll go into more detail on that later as well. We are also proposing to reinstate the certification increases for law enforcement and building inspectors. And we are also proposing to institute a new holiday pay for public safety employees. There's 12 holidays in a year. We're not proposing to pay them for all 12, but six of those holidays, and we'll cover that as well. And then the last focus area would be investment in our employee health insurance fund. The health insurance fund is a self-funded plan. We don't quote "buy insurance." Traditionally, it's self-funded, just like our workers' comp is self-funded. Going on to the next slide, in terms of guiding principles, these are principles that you as a board have adhered to, especially as we worked ourselves out of the recession budgetarily, and those being to continue with the base budget concept, basically saying that we would, will only have expenditures if there are corresponding revenues, and our revenues that would not mean spending fund balance. The second principle would be to maintain the right sizing budget approach, and that's along the ideas of the base budget. And then to build upon structural balance, again, expenditures should be covered by current revenues. Another principle, that this budget reflects continued incremental recovery in the local economy, i.e. tax base. Utilizes growth in the tax base and sales tax as recurring revenues. So for fiscal year 15, 16, it is recommended that there be a overall budget of $222,769, $769,246. This corresponds to page two in your binder. With this recommended budget, and this is all funds totaled together, the general fund is a fund within the overall budget, which is, really drives your property tax rate, and we'll go into additional detail about that in a moment. Two things to note, this budget does not propose a tax increase for next year. It holds the tax rate constant at 68 cents per $100 of evaluation, and this would be the fourth consecutive year that we would not have had a tax increase. I think the last time we had a, we had a change in the rate was when we had revaluation in 2012. Some of the budget highlights, again, the first bullet on the next screen maintains rate, like I just mentioned, at 68 cents. Increases current expense funding for both Pitt County schools and Pitt Community College. Reinstates pay-for-performance increases for all employees in all departments. Reinstate certification salary increases for law enforcement inspection staff. Again, as I mentioned earlier, appropriates what I'm calling the partial holiday pay for non-exempt employees who work shifts, in terms of shift workers in public safety, the Sheriff's Department, the Detention Center, the 911 and Communications, as well as EMS. What we're proposing is that of the 12 holidays, they would be paid for six of those holidays of their choice, assuming they worked that holiday. We would, we've budgeted, I believe it's about $129,000 is the cost, so it would be limited to only those folks who are in those different departments. Another budget highlight, this budget does appropriate fund balance to stabilize the employee health program, insurance program. We are experiencing some challenges in that program due to higher rates of utilization by our workforce, and we'll go into details about that later on as well. This budget does not include a COLA, cost of living, or a market adjustment. Our January to January change was about less than a percent. If we were to include a COLA at 1%, it'd be about half a million dollars to, would be the cost of that, but that is not in the budget at this point in time. Only the pay-for-performance. With pay-for-performance, employees, depending upon where they are on the salary range, can either earn a 1.2% or a 2.4% increase based upon their anniversary date with your organization. On the next slide, again, for 15, 16, all funds, you can see that we've got, again, the recommended $222 million budget. A year ago, what was adopted, it was a $215, $216 million budget. This would be a 3.29% increase over what was adopted a year ago. Again, page two is a, more of a larger breakout of the numbers. On the next slide on the monitor gives you a general fund overview. Again, the general fund is a large component of the overall budget of the $222 million budget. The, what's being recommended, well, first of all, what was requested in totality was $162, almost $163 million in total requests. Myself, working with Finance Director Dwayne Holder, we took reductions to those overall requests of about $4.2 million, and have driven that down to $158,37180 is what is being recommended based upon the 68 cent tax rate. Some of the revenues that are projected, the portion that goes to the general fund, need to remember that even within the 68 cent tax rate, part of that is broken out to the Development Commission. The far majority stays on the general fund, so you have a tax rate of .6730 to the general fund, the balance then going to the industrial development. Includes a 3% increase in sales tax. This will be the first full year that we have enjoyed the credit, I guess you could call it, of the Department of Revenue's sales tax payback. If we recall, I think it was three years ago, we were informed by the Department of Revenue that they had overpaid us $1.8 million, if my memory holds true, in sales tax, and then they were requiring us to pay it back all at once. We convinced them that they should allow us to pay it back in the same amount of time that they had provided too much, you know, in receipts. So this year will be the first year where we will enjoy that. We do have a $2 million fund balance plug, which is, that is the amount that we would expect to fall back to fund balance by June 30th of next year. Does include a $500,000 fund balance plug for the employee medical fund. Again, we'll talk more about that and the rationale. So in effect, we're plugging $2.5 million, and you'll see the rationale for that in just a moment. The adopted budget for last year, at about $153 million, the difference between that and what is being recommended would be an increase of 3.52% within the general fund. Again, that growth is based upon the growth in sales tax, ad-vulorm taxes, other fees and such, holding the tax rate at 68 cents. On the next slide, general fund, within the general fund, the different areas of funding, general government at $113, almost $114 million, public health, $9.6 million, social services, $34 million, court facilities, $284,000, and mental health at 580, almost rounded 588,000. Again, going back to that general fund total, $158 million. In terms of the overall revenue review, if you want to see a larger picture of this, page four in your binder gives you the same outlook in terms of the pie chart, and you can see the far majority of the revenues come in from ad-vulorm taxes. Intergovernmental is the second largest, then you move into other categories of permits and fees, interest earnings, miscellaneous, fund balance appropriated, and so forth. Again, coming back to the total of all funds of a $222 million, almost $223 million budget. On page five of the binder, also corresponds to the screen in front of you, the ad-vulorm tax base, a year ago, we had a tax base of taxable property within Pitt County, obviously excluding all non-taxable property, was $11,722,394,714. We are, through our tax administrator, are projecting, we're not projecting, we're saying that the tax base for 15, 16 will be $11,903,734,690, which is a net increase of $181 million or a 1.55% increase in the base. We were originally thinking that would be about a 1%. We were able, through their work in, working the tax base, it grew a little bit more than the 1%. What that yields, just that one source, property taxes, what that increase in base value of $181 million, what it yields by the time you take it against the collection rate, take it against the, splitting it out to the general fund versus the Development Commission, is $1,196,000 in terms of new revenue. That does not include sales tax growth, does not include any other growth, but that's just ad-vulorm tax base in and of itself. On the next slide on the screen, we look at sales tax, and again, as we were saying, we are, we are projecting a 3% overall growth in sales tax. The state had said 3% to 4% in the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Fearless Budget Forecast. We believe 3% is a, is a good number in terms of sales tax projection. And the bottom note there, the value of that sales tax payback to Pitt County is $379,000, almost $380,000. Keep in mind, all 10 municipalities in Pitt County also enjoyed, are in the same position as Pitt County with their respective amounts. They've got a windfall, if you want to call it. They've met their payback obligations as well, so they have additional money so they can appropriate within their own budgets. On page, or actually, I'm sorry, the next slide on the monitor details the ABC Board annual performance. At this point, we are recommending to hold, in the current year, 2015, that doesn't show on the slide yet, because it's not appropriate in terms of, we haven't came to a June 30th audit. But this year, we've appropriated, in the current year, we're sitting in $1.3 million. This budget proposes to hold that $1.3 million appropriation. We agreed to work with the ABC Board as they look to relocate their warehouse behind their store next to Sam's. We said we would, at least for this year, we would hold that at $1.3 million. I think the ABC Board is wanting the county to hold it for the next three years, but my position on that would be, let's watch their, their net profit, their increase in sales, and if it's possible next year to up that, we could up that. But we're going to try to hold good to our word, and we have held that to the $1.3 million for fiscal year 15, 16. In terms of proposed fee, fee changes, on the next slide on the monitor, have a number of fee changes that are proposed. Animal control, it would like to institute a owner surrender fee of $20. This is what we currently charge municipalities. Basically, this is a user fee that if, right now, if a person, if an individual brings in a dog or a cat to be given up, we have to incur all the costs on that in terms of whether it's adoption, whether it's euthanasia, the boarding, kindling as such. So we're just trying to make this consistent with how we handle the municipalities. Other fee changes, environmental health, they've seen fee changes at the state level, and they're just wanting to make sure that their schedule reflects what the state charges in terms of the things outlined there. Water samples for bacteria, chemical, petroleum, lead, drinking water wells, you can see those are changing from what the current fee has outlined, $35, $15, and $290, to the proposed fees, and they're broken out, water samples for chloroform, 70, the pesticide petroleum, inorganic is 120, other samples is 85, irrigation wells at 216. Again, this reflects the state schedule of fees, it's not something being driven locally or internally by the Environmental Health Division. On the next slide, proposed fee changes for inspections. Currently, for a permit reactivation fee for residential, there's a $50 fee, and they're proposing to change that to $100, and the same thing for the non-residential. And in some cases, there are multiple permits taken out, and that $50 can be compounded, so it may look like we're doubling it, but the idea is to capture our costs and also to try to mitigate some of the multiple fees that are charged. I've asked James to provide some more specific examples, both on the residential side and the non-residential side, so he'd get a better feel for if this is a manageable fee increase or not, and we can present that to you later in the workshop. Public health, as they've done in the past on their proposed fee changes, they are for flu shots in the dental area, they would like to, you know, to show the current fee of $27.53 and $19. They'd like the fee to be based, basically, on their health department actual cost, and that the fee schedule for almost all of their fees does say that. These are a couple of areas where that was not captured in the prior years. All right, with the fund balance, fund balances in the years past, it had always been kind of the dreaded conversation, but it's becoming the, I don't want to say joyful conversation, but the more upbeat conversation. This corresponds with page eight in your binder, if you want to see a larger printout of the numbers. We, as of June 30th of the last audited year, we were at 19.9% fund balance level. We right now are projecting that June 30th of the current fiscal year, 2015, that we are going to end up in, that we will be at 21.13% fund balance. Your stated policy goal as a board is to have a fund balance between 18% to 20%. So we would like to first congratulate the board, the county, for your policies, and that we are, we are actually exceeding that fund balance goal, and we have some recommendations and proposals for that amount of fund balance over the 20%, which we'll talk about. The next slide on the monitor gives you the fund balance in terms of percent, going back to 2010. As the board will recall, at that point, we were at 14.63, we dropped to 12.07, slowly started climbing back up, almost 14, 15, jumped up to the 19.9, and then again, projected 21.13% come June 30th of this current year. The next slide, in terms of the fund balance, again, we do have a recommendation for those portion of funds over 20%. We have an immediate recommendation, and we have a, after the audit comes in, recommendation, we would like to, we have a list of items, of one-time expenses that we'd like you to consider, but we don't want you to consider those until we have the audited report of the year-end to know that we did hit 21.3%, so that the 1.3%, the 1.1% above, that we can truly have it there to utilize for one-time expenditures, such as capital as such. On the next slide on the screen, these, this is a list of the one-time expenditures. The first item, the, within the 911 department, we've got, as you're aware, a RFP that's out on this, well, that's actually, it's on the street, and the proposals came back. We have proposals in-house to replace the CAD software in 911. We are reviewing those, that project. The cost is to be determined. We've got a wide range of proposed costs as proposals have come in. A portion of that will be paid for by the restricted 911 fund, and a portion of that that is not eligible will be paid, have to be paid for by general fund dollars. The other items that we basically took off of the requests of department heads that we felt like were one-time expenses, out at the Office Park north of the river, there are a couple buildings, such as the Health Department and the Human Services Center, that have a carpet in there, original from the construction of the buildings, that are now 20 years old, that are in dire need of replacing. That's about $96,000. Our Buildings and Grounds Department would like to seal parking lots, such as this campus, at the tune of $36,000. They have a mower replacement at $12,000. Out at the District Park, there were two items identified on the District Park Master Plan. One was drainage improvements at $20,000. The other was the greenhouse property cleanup at $25,000. At the courthouse, the next two projects are kind of interrelated. The first one, interior improvements, they are recommending, the courthouse committee is recommending that the interior of the courthouse, the way that security is, people are screened in the courthouse, that that be modified by some interior modifications as well as equipment, such as scanners and metal detectors. That'll be the cost of almost $121,000. On the exterior of the courthouse, the court officials, i.e. the judges, clerk of court, registrar deeds, would like the back parking lot behind the courthouse between, I guess it's right off behind Second Street, to be fenced with electronic gate for them to come and go for security purposes. Again, $55,000. At the Detention Center, there was a request to, for the camera system, for the, well, part of the courthouse obviously has been built in phases. The older part of the courthouse, they would like to replace the camera system at $120,000 for security purposes, for the officers, as well as, I guess indirectly, the inmates as well. Detention Center, we've got vans, a request for $136,118. These are special transport vans that transport inmates from the detention center to the courthouse for core purposes. Elections, the voting equipment is in need of being replaced at the tune of $310,000. Farmers Market, the Farmers Market has, has asked in years past, you have it on the CIP, to expand the Bay Area at $110,000. That $110,000 would only pay for the building expansion, it says, and paving, but paving is another cost that's undetermined right now. And lastly, we put on there a placeholder for vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, because this year is a, what we call an off-year for vehicle replacement. Next year, we would go back to the next loan and borrow about $600,000, but this year, there's no money in the budget for vehicles itself. All of this totals up to about $1.2 million, excluding what the CAD system could cost as well. We won't have that much in the fund balance, the 1.1%, so we'll have to prioritize this and bring it back to you. But again, we don't really want to consider this until, A, the budget is audited, you have the numbers, and then we know that where we stand over the 20%. Terms of expenditure review, you'll look at pages 11, 12, and 13 in your binder, this corresponds to the slides on the screen. Again, the $222 million budget, you can see the different areas in which we have expenditures. We are happy and proud to say that education remains as your highest expenditure area at 24.78%. You then have, human services is the second largest at 20.16, general government is third, and then public safe, well, public safety is third, and then general government is fourth. You can see how that breaks out. All right, moving into, on the PowerPoint, library funding. A year ago, staff was asked to analyze library funding in terms of, not necessarily Shepherd Memorial, where we, the funding arrangement of Shepherd Memorial is, the city of Greenville pays for two-thirds costs, the county pays for one-third costs. That's a longstanding library funding arrangement we have. What we were asked to look at was library funding for the small libraries that we have traditionally funded. And if you look at page 14 in the binder, you can see the analysis and research that was done by the Finance Department. So we looked at various methods in terms of how to address library funding, and admittedly, a lot of this discussion was precipitated by the town of Winterville. They have a, their town budget for the library is $161,000. They had proposed cutting that $61,000 and pretty much made a request to the county to fund that after you had adopted the current year's budget. And at the end of the day, they went back and decided to, to fund the entire amount, the whole $161,000. I think... I think hoping that the county, in this budget process, would come back and address that gap. So on page fourteen, again, the, what we looked at was a number of factors in that this table here. Looked at the two thousand and twelve estimated population of all the jurisdictions. We, you see the second column has a library. We looked at their total budget of what they, their budget for library funding. We look at the town-city contribution, what was appropriated in fourteen, fifteen. We looked at the one-third, two-thirds concept that we currently experience with Shepherd Memorial and realized that that was not a realistic formula for funding the smaller libraries in Pitt County. And I guess it needs to be stated that, I do want to note or state that library funding is not a mandated service. Obviously, it is a services that's very closely correlated with education funding. It's not in the education totals, but libraries obviously serve that, that public need in education. Not only for K through twelve, but for folks who are out of school, who need library services. We then looked at a dollar per capita, per person, and we had the six dollars and fifty-five cents. And you can see the numbers there that were yielded, again, did not yield a situation where we could realistically fees that. Then looked at, broke it out to two dollars and fifty cents per capita. At the end of the day, we broke out to a dollar per capita. And in this situation with Winterville, they would go from an appropriation of four thousand to ten thousand. Aiden would go from four thousand, correct me if I'm right here, Dwayne, four to five, Farmville, four to five, Grifton, two to three. Bethel would hold constant at two to two, and Fountain at two to two. So we have increased marginally library funding for the smaller libraries. Winterville, I think, is experiencing the greatest percentage increase than the others. But at this point, unless you, I guess, direct us otherwise, that's what we're driving to you as a recommendation. Okay, moving quickly to education funding, Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. This corresponds with page fifteen through nineteen of your binder. We'll look at Pitt County Schools first. Pitt County Government is required by state statute to provide current expense funding for Pitt County Schools. We're also required separate and apart from this to provide the brick and mortar building expense functions of the schools as well. So on, on page fifteen on the top under Pitt County Schools, you can see they've got a current budget that Pitt County allocates of thirty-six million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The second category, what they requested, you can see they've asked for those three numbers there, which was an increase of two million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is, that is the additional ask on top of what the thirty-six million dollars that is appropriated in the current year. What I'm recommending is an increase in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. The capital outlay would remain the same, the rent would remain the same, so the three-quarters of a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the additional current expense amount. In terms of a percentage, they had asked for five point nine-nine percent above and beyond what they're currently getting. This budget recommends just a little over two percent, two point oh-six. For Pitt Community College, on the next slide on the screen and also on the bottom of page fifteen in your binder. Likewise, they have a current budget of five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. They had requested four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars in new additional funding. This budget recommends a total of five million, four hundred and ninety-five, three twenty-six. That's an increase of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which percentage-wise, their percentage increase request was eight point nine-eight percent, just under nine percent. And this recommends three point two-nine percent. On page sixteen and seventeen shows Pitt County's position across the one hundred counties in North Carolina in terms of what they call the ADM, the Average Daily Membership. It's basically the value of their current expense divided by their, their average daily membership. So if the Pitt County School System has twenty-three thousand plus or minus students in it. We, as a, Pitt County as a, as a, you know, the local government appropriates, as you can see on the bottom of page sixteen, we're ranked number forty-nine, one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars per student within the system. So we're almost at that fifty percent percentile. Likewise, on page eighteen, out of the fifty-eight community colleges in North Carolina, our financial rank of those fifty-eight, we come in number forty-six out of fifty-eight. Where the dollar amount is six hundred and forty-two dollars. All right, on page twenty in the binder, and there's, there's no corresponding slide to this one, but just wanted to highlight a couple of things on page twenty. This is what we call our affiliate agencies. These are not agencies, these are not departments, that county government, but these are, are agencies on the top that we consider close affiliated with us. The ones on the bottom part of that sheet are what we call sustaining agencies, other agencies as well that we fund. On the affiliate agencies, for Shepherd Memorial Library, where I was stating earlier that we, the city funds two-thirds, we fund one-third. What the, the current year's budget is five fifty-three, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, six ninety-three, they'd asked for five eighty-one, and I'm recommending five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. For the Pitt County Council on Aging, current year's budget is two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine forty-five. They asked for a little over two seventeen. I'm recommending the two seventeen, two forty. For the Pitt Greenville Airport, as part of their continued economic stimulus plans to encourage planes to remain in Pitt County, to be hosted in the hangars here in Pitt County. So we can enjoy the property tax collections on those planes. This plan recommends the continuation of that program with an appropriation of forty thousand dollars. So on the bottom part of this chart on page twenty, the nonprofit or sustaining agencies, you can see we've got them broken up between human services, cultural and recreational. And then under cultural recreational, you have libraries, recreation, civic arts. And these, there's really nothing major in terms of changes here, other than what we talked about, the libraries. Again, I think I couched that as marginal increases on the libraries. Moving on to page twenty-one and also to the next slide in the PowerPoint presentation. Within the EMS Fund for Emergency Medical Services, this fund funds the ten EMS squads in the county, of which eight of them are run under contract. They're nonprofit corporations. Two of them are county squads, or they're actually ran by as a unit of our emergency services department that actually have county employees in them. The budget that is being recommended has been approved by the Oversight Committee. It holds the tax rate at four point six cents. It maintains current year appropriations for the nonprofit squads and the county-operated squads. And it maintains their capital replacement plan for vehicles and equipment as such. The, the next page in the binder, page twenty-one, and the screen before you now, gives the breakout within the EMS Fund. Noel Lee will be presenting this week and we'll go in more detail. Again, there's really no major changes within this fund from what's laid out before you. Moving on to the fire districts. Within Pitt County, we have twenty different volunteer fire departments that we, again, contract with. These are all nonprofit entities that provide rural fire protection for Pitt County. And three of those are actually run in combination with the towns. They're a town-county type operation. Again, Noel can go in more detail on that. But in terms of the twenty fire districts, on page twenty-two, you've got everything listed on there, from the value of their tax base within their service district. To their, what their current rate is, what the proposed rate is, what that levy would yield in terms of actual dollars to them, what their budget request is. And of the twenty, you can see three of those are highlighted, the Aiden, Faulkland and Farmville. Three of the twenty are asking for a rate increase. On the first one, you've got Aiden on the very top, going from point zero four seven five to point zero five nine nine. Then you have Faulkland going from a point oh-six to a point oh-eight rate increase. And then Farmville from point oh-three nine, point, point zero three eight nine to point zero four zero zero. The next slide just on the screen just highlights those three requests in terms of their rate increases. All right, moving on quickly to human resources. This corresponds with page twenty-three in the binder. We had forty and a quarter positions requested, forty point two-five new positions requested. This budget is recommending of those forty that you see outlined there on page twenty-three, six and three-quarters. Two for the sheriff, one for detention, two for DSS, one and a half for public health, and then a quarter position for planning. And within the detention center, it's being recommended for a classification officer that will assist us. As we are in compliance with the federal PRIA regulations, the rape elimination laws within the detention center. And I'm going to have to ask staff to help me, where's the second position? Okay, okay, thank you. Within the, okay, so that one was, the detention was the PRIA. The two within the sheriff's office are the two pre-trial enforcement detectives. These two positions are, were or are grant-funded. Grant funds will be running out. Felt like it was important to keep these two positions on because of their function. I'm sure the sheriff will talk about those in his presentation that follows mine. Within DSS, they had asked for a few positions. I'm recommending two. One is a human resources aide, which is basically a transportation aide. They're having a lot of issue with having to transport clients around who can't transport themselves. Social workers were doing this at a whole higher rate of pay than what, what they're proposing here. A transportation aide would be just a driver to drive the, I guess maybe the type of clients who are not competent to take themselves around. Then we have an income maintenance investigator, too. That was at a request, that is to help with fraud within DSS. And the DSS Board felt that was important, so I thought we should, should give that consideration. And to keep in mind that their positions are, depending upon their function, are either fifty, sixty or seventy-five percent reimbursable. Public Health had asked for one and a half positions, a billing supervisor is a full-time position, and a processing assistant as a halftime position. Within planning, they have an existing position that they wanted to further up. I think actually, they wanted, the request was within planning for it to go up to a halftime position, I only allocated a quarter time. Okay, on page, or the next slide on the monitor, looking at the benefit calculation rates, corresponds to page twenty-four in the book. Gives you the retirement formulas. That has actually decreased just slightly based upon what direction were given by Raleigh. As a, you know, the local government to fund the local government retirement portion obligation. That's good news, that dropped. Law enforcement has dropped slightly as well. Retirement for the 401K went up just a slight here. Life insurance is the same. And we've got some, some big changes to the hospitalization plan, which I'm going to break out in the next few slides. There's, there's, in terms of the employee participation fee, twenty dollars a month for those who are compliant with our, our program to, for health and wellness, that remains the same. And then those who are not, fifty-six dollars, that remains the same, at least for, as proposed at this moment in time, for fifteen, sixteen. So the Employee Health Fund. The Employee Health Fund, since I've been with Pitt County, is kind of ironic, because it seems that when the economy is not doing so well and we're in a recession. The Employee Health Fund, fund balance goes up, we're doing well. But when the economy starts to recover, then there's an inverse relationship, then we start having problems with the health fund. So I guess it's a good thing that the overall economy is improving as we see through our tax collection revenues with ad-volume taxes, sales taxes, expansions, job growth, so on and so forth. But we, we're having utilization opportunities, I'm going to call it, within the, within the health fund. So looking at the next slide on the screen, I've couched good news and not-so-good news. The good news is, within the health fund, we've held rates constant for six years. Show me any private or public health plan that has held rates, their rates for six years. And I don't think you can show me, but may, I'm sure there's an anomaly out there, just like we are. Another good news is, our wellness program is active and thriving as administered through our public health department for our employee population. We have the high majority of our employees who do pay that lower twenty dollars per month participation fee, rather than the higher fifty-six dollars. And with that, you have to earn so many, six credits a year in different activities, whether by attending trainings on health and wellness, whether by participating in a physical activity program. At the end of the year, you have to have six credits. If you have the six credits, you pay the lower amount. If you don't, you pay the higher amount. So the not-so-good news caption of this, utilization is going up. I've mentioned that, and I'm going to show you how that's going up in a chart in just a minute. Our expenses are exceeding our revenues and we expect within this fund that our current fund balance will be depleted by the end of this fiscal year. So looking at page twenty-five in your, in your binder, that'll correspond with what's on the screen. We showed an illustration here, going back to fiscal year, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and ten, then going to current. You can see the first column is revenues and transfers in. You can see our expenses, our expenses is really the telltale sign of this, this fund. Where back in two thousand and ten, we were at seven point three rounded, we went up to eight, eight point eight, dropped back down to eight point two. Then at June thirtieth, fourteen, we were at nine point four, and we're projecting at the end of this current year to be at ten point two million dollars. And utilization, as a self-funded program, when employees use the service, we're billed on a monthly basis. We have to cut a check or electronic transfer back to Blue Cross Blue Shield to pay for that utilization. And for some reason, our utilization is up. I would like to think that this year is going to be an anomaly and that it will drop. If you average two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and what we project for two thousand and fifteen, it'd be nine point two million dollars of utilization or expense. But we, at this point, we don't, we could, the trend could continue. The new year, fifteen, sixteen, could be another ten point two, or it could be ten, ten point two or greater. We are going to meet with Blue Cross Blue Shield this week to talk about possible further plan changes. And those will be plan changes above and beyond what I'm going to recommend to you this morning. One thing we did want to note, in the next column where you've got transfers out to other funds. In two thousand and eleven, we transferred out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the. Workers' comp. And then in two thousand and twelve, we had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was transferred out as well to, to retirement and workers' comp. At that point in time, if you look at the very last column, you can see that represents the fund balance of this fund. The fund was flush, and at that point, the workers' comp fund needed a transfer. We wanted to show for our OPEB obligation, and, and OPEB is the Other Post-Employment Benefits requirement. In our audit, we needed to show that we're putting money away for retiree health insurance. So we transferred out, back in those years where the fund was really doing well, and we had ample surplus fund balance within, in that fund. But now that the utilization is going up, and that we're, you know, about a million dollars in utilization over where we were a year ago, we're showing a depletion. So one thing we're going to recommend is to do a transfer from the fund balance within the self-insured workers' comp fund back to the health fund. To plug part of that, that fund balance issue. We are also proposing in this year's budget to fund half a million dollars of fund balance appropriation. And basically what we're doing, you know, we talked about the two million dollar plug of fund balance that we, we fund into the general fund. And we expect it to drop back through, under expenditures within departments. Departments spend ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of expenditures. That balance, lap salary and whatnot, drops back, so the two million dollars drops back. The half million dollars is above that two million dollar mark. And what we're, basically what we're doing and recommending is, we're going out and grabbing a portion of that one point one percent above the twenty percent, the twenty-one point one percent, and appropriating it. Because if we don't, this fund will be in the negative, I guess would be the best place, best way to say it. The diagram below this chart shows the utilization. And in terms of the dotted line is your revenue and transfers in. You can see how that has remained constant. But the actual utilization or the expenses and transfers out, you can see how that, you see the trend line is going up. up higher than the revenues coming in. So, moving on, as part of this discussion, some of the changes that are being recommended. First, in terms of the current monthly cost of the plan per employee is five hundred and ninety-six dollars per month. For the employee-only coverage, you, as the Board of County Commissioners, pays five hundred and ninety-six dollars per employee. All they pay is twenty dollars out of pocket, unless they pay the fifty-six, because they're not compliant with the program for a lower premium. We're recommending that go up by a factor of thirty dollars a month to six hundred and twenty-six dollars per month. So for the employee-only coverage, there's no effect on the employee-only coverage whatsoever. There's an effect of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the general fund, because we're having to pay that thirty dollars for all the employees across the organization. Where it does go up is on that same chart on the, that's on the screen, it's also, is this on the binder, guys? I don't think this is in the binder. Okay, so, on the, on the screen, on the bottom, the optional coverages that our employees elect to purchase, because they so choose, i.e. parent-child coverage, employee-spouse coverage, or family policy coverage, will increase. You can see currently, the parent-child is three forty-four a month, employee-spouse is four ninety-three, family policy is five ninety-six. That'll increase to parent-child to three fifty-seven, the next one to five twenty, and then the family to six twenty-six. That's a net increase of thirteen on the first one, twenty-seven on the second one, and thirty dollars on the, on the last one. So those are changes being recommended immediately to help increase revenues in the fund. On the next slide, further changes to the program that we have asked, we asked Blue Cross Blue Shield to give us a rate quote on these. We want to change the, some of the deductibles in the plan. And you can see currently, for the deductible for an individual is five hundred dollars. We're recommending and have received a quote from Blue Cross Blue Shield to take this up to a thousand. And I'm gonna go through all the rest of these, but you might say, well, what is this based upon? How, how did you double that deductible from a five hundred to a thousand? We compared this against two things. One, we compared it against the state employee health plan that is out there. We also looked at Wake County's health plan, in terms of what they offered to their employees, and derived that our, we have a very, very, healthy is not the right word, but a very robust, thank you, very robust, thank you, Duane, plan. It still has ninety-ten coverage, so when you're in the hospital, you're covered, ninety percent of your expenses are covered, ten percent are not. Most, if not all, plans, I'd say we are the far exception, are either eighty-twenty or seventy-thirty. At this point today, I'm not suggesting we go, modify from ninety-ten, but tomorrow, when I say tomorrow, I mean maybe the next fiscal year or beyond, I think at some point, unless we get our utilization numbers under control, we're gonna have to look at an eighty-twenty or seventy-thirty. If you go seventy-thirty or eighty-twenty, you can provide to the employees optional coverage, let's say we go seventy-thirty, employees could buy optional coverage for a ninety-ten, but it would be money out of their pocket, they'd have to pay up to buy that additional premium. But right now, I'm not, I'm recommending it stay at ninety-ten, but the way utilization is going up, and the way our revenues are, something's gotta change, just like in these, on this illustration here on the screen. And this is also on page, actually, this is not. Yeah, the information on the screen I'm going over right now, I don't think is in the binder. But the deductible going from five hundred to a thousand, employee max going from three thousand to four thousand, family max from six to eight, emergency room co-pay, we want to double that sucker from five hundred to three hundred. We are finding, and through a utilization review with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're finding that a lot of employees are still using the emergency, the emergency room as a dock in the box, when they should really be going to a, like our health clinic we have, right over here on Sixth Street at Memorial, where they can go on county time, they can pay for a ten dollar co-pay, but some employees are opting just to go to the emergency room for whatever condition. We want them to fill it, if they so choose to do that, they can do that, but we're recommending that the charge will be three hundred dollars, and that's three hundred dollars you pay when you enter the door, basically. You're not billed that three hundred dollars. The primary co-pay, we're recommending to change that, increase that by five dollars, from twenty to twenty-five. The specialist co-pay, which is currently forty, to go a ten dollar increase to fifty, and then on the prescription drug co-pays, to go from a forty, twenty, thirty-five to a five, twenty-five, forty. So it'd be a dollar increase, five dollar increase, and five dollar increase, respectfully. Again, this is self-insured plan. We have to control the revenues coming in, we have to, to the extent that we can, control expenses. Utilization is hard to control. We do the health screenings for our employees, we do our wellness program, we, I don't know what more to say in terms of how we try to manage the program. We do have an internal committee called the HISC, which is the Health Insurance Steering Committee, made up of various departments, as well as management, staff, myself, Duane, Mike Taylor, that meet to review the numbers and review the plan. And that's just kinda where we stand right now. So on the next slide, the last slide on this topic, I've got employee health program changes beyond fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. Again, management team and the HISC will meet, examine what additional modifications may need to be made to further stabilize a plan, as well as stabilize fund balance. All right, we're near to wrapping up, and then I can take questions. In terms of the capital improvement, you held a workshop back in January, your CIP workshop, Capital Improvement Plan Workshop. At that workshop, we laid out a new way of looking at projects to you, to have two pages rather than one. We used to have one page that comprised all the shopping list of all the projects, and folks got their project on the list, whether there was an identified, a realistically identified funding source or not. The way we have it laid out now on page twenty-six and twenty-seven in your book, is how we laid it out to you in the budget workshops. The first page on page twenty-six and the slide on the screen are basically those projects that are recommended to you that have a realistic funding source. At this point in time, unless the board would like, I don't see a need to review this, because we went through this in the budget, excuse me, the budget workshop. And let me ask Duane, or Shelley, were there any changes on this? Okay, same thing for page twenty-seven on the, again, these are requested projects, but projects that we just don't have an identified funding source. Well, we have an identified funding source, but it's not a realistic identified funding source, i.e. whether it would be a property tax increase, whether it would be a grant, whether it would be state funds, whatever it may be. You know, an example of that is the county office building replacement. And we talked about that in detail. It's a twenty-six million dollar project, that'd be about two and a half pennies on the tax rate. We explained that, or tried to recommend that this building we have today serves our purposes, and until we have a funding source to replace it, or some opportunity through Biden, it's just not realistic. So we continue to carry it on, on the list, but, and that goes with the other projects as well. All right, one last slide, wanted to hit on E Block at the detention center, because this budget does not fund the opening of E Block for fiscal year sixteen, fifteen, sixteen. I had talked with the sheriff about the possibility of opening E Block, but a couple factors have played in. One is the discussion and presentation by ECBH about the Healthy Transitions facility that they would like to build. And a little more detail on that, what the ask is on that is, they're asking for approximately six acres of county land at the Office Park north of the river. The construction cost on that facility is about six million dollars, of which ECBH holds in their account today, which they will pay a hundred percent of. They've got it through their Medicaid savings, that they've worked on as a local management entity. The county currently appropriates four hundred and eighty-seven, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year for our mental health maintenance of effort, as part of the, all the counties in our catchment area. There's some talk about relieving us of a portion of that four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for having that facility on our land. It'd be a hundred-year lease, probably a dollar a year type situation. We'd own the land, they'd own the building. If they cease to use the building for that purpose, we, the building reverts back to us. The, the detail that came out in yesterday's meeting, when I asked the question, how much does Wake County appropriate to that facility? Initially, we were told little to nothing. Yesterday, we were told four hundred thousand dollars. So there's more details, but I think it will be a win-win, no matter what we broker with ECBH to get that facility constructed, because it will divert jail population. That's my whole point of bringing this up. Part of my rationale for not opening E Block is, if that is open, there's a small portion of those inmates that I think would go to this Healthy Transitions, and that even, we could talk to the judges about having folks referred. This is not, this is not a lockdown facility, this is a voluntary facility. So there are some folks that, yes, would have to go to detention, I'm not that naive to think they wouldn't, but there are still some cases where folks could be, if they volunteer to go to Healthy Transitions and comply, then maybe their sentence would be less as such. So this screen before you shows a number of things. The red line going through this, this chart shows the total capacity today of the detention center without E Block. If you can imagine, at the very top of that, that illustration where it's six hundred, that represents the total capacity of the detention center if we opened E Block. The yellow line at the bottom, down here, if you can see that, at four hundred and sixty, represents what the detention center staff call the functional capacity of the facility. That's the, I guess maybe the safe loading of the facility, in terms of, that's the workable number, I guess, of inmates. Obviously, the blue line that goes up and down, this goes over a number of years, going back to July of two thousand and nine to January of two fifteen, shows the actual utilization or the actual inmate count. You know, it jumps from, goes down to, the very beginning, from the bottom of four forty-four up to five forty-nine, again, down to four fifty-eight. It goes basically up and down. If you were to trend line the actual utilization of that blue line, if you were to create a straight line across of actual utilization, you're looking at probably about four eighty-five, four ninety-five on average through all those years. At this point in time, it would cost about one point four million, one point three million dollars to open E Block. That's well over a penny on the tax rate. I'm just, at this point, unless there's other opportunities to, to realize cost savings in other areas of the detention center, i.e. such as jail health, which may be a conversation that's coming up in the future, that could contribute toward the opening costs of E Block. At this point, I can't justify, based upon the numbers, the expense, and I know we've mothballed E Block, I think since two thousand and eight. And this is an older unit that's been rehabbed, but it's sitting there, and it is available when needed. The sheriff may have other comments and other position he wants to take on E Block, but that's where my analysis stands today. And with that, I am done. Or I'm ready for your questions. Well, hold on, there is one more screen, I'm sorry. There's one more screen. Fiscal year two thousand and sixteen and beyond, okay, so we're looking at the year beyond the year, the year we're planning. So another, another, a number of factors to take into consideration. The, obviously, January one of next year will have the effect of revaluation, which again, I think will be minimal or marginal. Revaluation, in simplest of terms, is based upon the sales data between the last time we did reevaluation, two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. That derives the schedule of values that then gets applied against all of the taxable real estate, whether commercial, industrial, office, institutional. We are just not, the sales data is not showing a dramatic increase, so basically, it's telling us that our tax base, in effect, will not increase in value, so there's not a whole lot of salvation in hoping that that tax base will go up. The employee health insurance fund, we've talked about it and needing to further stabilize it. We have the PCC general bond obligation that will come online. That will, as you see, it starred there, and you see the first star says, the nineteen point nine million dollar authorization that the voters voted on is the equivalent of a one point eight five cent tax increase. Now, technically, of that one point eight five cents, the actual debt service is one point six, one point six cents. The other two hundred and fifty thousand on top of that is the operating costs for utilities, insurance, maintenance. Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, there's two different requests before you. We're gonna come back on the next meeting, on the eighteenth, your next regular meeting, to talk about the twenty-five million, Pitt County Schools is requesting of you, and then the two point seven, I believe, of Pitt Community College. Detention Center E Block, we just talked about that, again, equivalent of one point four million, about a one point four cent tax increase, if required a tax increase. Animal shelter expansion, obviously, we're now working with animalshelters.com to plan that expansion, that'll be coming back to you, you've asked for monthly reports, so we'll be coming back and report on that. The radio paging system improvements, that's another one that's out there, that the first official project committee was held last week, and the consultant came in and laid out where the county's headed with that, and that will be a costly project as well. So, not a whole lot of good news on the horizon past the fiscal year, but that's where we stand. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Thank you, we appreciate you and the staff for all the time you put into, putting this together. I know this is the biggest project of the year, each and every year, and I know however we flesh it out, it always works out pretty well, or at least as well as we can make it with the money that we have. We'll give everybody a chance to ask questions, I'm just gonna start on one end and work all the way around to the other. If you go last and all your questions got answered, and we'll just get out a little earlier. I'll start on my left this time, I'll start with Mr. Hammond, do you have any questions of the manager about the budget that he's proposed?
Right this minute.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Williams?
Do we, do we ask all the questions we wanna ask, or do we just go?
Go right on down the list, hit whatever you got.
Because I did make some notes. My big question, I guess, has to do with the end of your report. I asked, I wanna know about, there was one question I asked, one of the residents in my area raised one question all the time, and about vacancies at the jail. I haven't had my tour yet, but that there was a lot of vacancy. So I'll, I'll ask that when I get over there, but since we have, having it here before us today, is there a lot of, they said it was a lot of vacant spaces, and citizen in my area was concerned about that, and if that's true.
Do you mean bed spaces, or employees?
The budget, how it pays into what they're paying for, if they're paying for a facility that's not used.
Well, E Block, again, is vacant, and that's ninety-six beds, and
What'd you say, is what kind of space?
E Block is detention center space that is vacant, because it's not funded, it would cost one point four million dollars to fund that, twenty-four-seven, heat, cool, staff, and so forth. So there's, there's minimal heating and cooling costs, there's no other costs associated with that. Is that what they're concerned about, or? In terms of the federal bed contract, we're, the sheriff's office is doing a good job on that contract, and they're, they're tracking the number of inmates that we projected in the current year's budget, and continuing that into next year's budget, so that's, that's on track.
Well, I, I may not, since I'm new, I may not understand all of the, the impact of their question, but they was talking about all this vacant space in a building that was being built, and it's not utilized.
The numbers we showed you
What I'm hearing.
Yeah, the numbers we showed you show that there are downtimes and there are uptimes, and probably the uptimes in terms of population is more than the downtimes, but I, I think the sheriff is gonna speak next, he can probably address that, but I would say, my estimation would be that all of the space that is open is more than fully utilized. Would you agree with that? Major Phillips? Yes, fully. They have inmates sleeping on mats on the floor, if there's not a bunk available, at times, when they're over capacity.
Okay, so it's not equipped to handle the extra flow?
At those high occupancy times, no.
Excuse me, would it help if she looked back at the chart on page twenty-seven? That helped me.
I was, I was looking at that, and I saw the up and down, and up and down, but I wanted to ask the question, because that's something they have brought to me, and I wanted them to know that I did address it, and that it was whatever. And I haven't asked my question, because I haven't seen the facility yet, and I do have a tour scheduled, I'm getting around to it, but I do have a tour scheduled, and I'll ask some of the others about that. My next question is, what is the comparison of the jail population to the school suspension as it relates to the cost? as it relates to the cost with the comparison? Are there a lot of out of school suspension that makes the jail population go up? I'm hearing that there is a school to jail policy or something. And that the cost of putting the children in the school, in the jail is more expensive than keeping them in the school and educating them in, in in-school suspension program of sorts. Because they're
You're talking about in-house suspension?
Yeah, in-house suspension at the school rather than taking them out of the school where the teachers are there and, and prepared and putting them in the jail. As where it may take more staffing for the jail population to be covered and the children are, you know, secured without being in the mainstream population of the adult criminals. That was, that's another concern.
Now, there is a juvenile detention center that's separate apart from the Pitt County Detention Center. The, Major Phillips?
The, the question has to do with, you're paying a whole lot for jail. I saw the, the cost of what it takes for one inmate. And if the child is in the school and you take them out of the school and put them in the jail, that increases the cost for putting them in, in the jail. Am I asking the question in the right place?
I don't think we have the data readily available to give you right here. But I would also interject that probably the infraction that there had been sentenced in that jail for would be an issue too, as to whether they could be placed in an alternate program, whether in public schools or in, in, in an in-school suspension program. There's multiple layers to this onion.
Commissioner Perkins, we, we're going to welcome you to your tour this week. Can't wait for you and Mr. Frawley to come by so we can give you a little more information. But in reference to our juvenile, juvenile population, it's a 16 and 17-year-old population. We hold no one under age of 16. We do have approximately 14, 15 juveniles at present in our facility. And I can explain a lot more to you when you come by.
Okay, well
We can go in complete detail and take as much time as you wish.
Okay, well, because the concern of the public is it costs less to educate than it is to imprison. To, less to educate than to incarcerate. And if, if the school is out of school suspending a large population, it's increasing over, it's a ripple effect. And, and that's my concern in this report as we look at the budget. And that's something that we should be cognizant of. Their out of school suspension policies as it relates to what is costing us as taxpayers.
I'm not sure what the cost on the out of school suspension policy is, but in reference to the cost per inmate, there's a lot of things that come into play on the cost per inmate. You have, of course, staffing. You have the health issues. Some inmates may cost a lot less to incarcerate and hold prior to their trial. Others may cost more because of other factors. Other factors come in so far as how we may have to watch that inmate, how we may have to take care of their health benefits while they're there. A lot of things, prescriptions, a lot of things go up and cause that factor of numbers to change on certain inmates versus, I don't know what the school policies are. I don't know what the cost, do you know what the cost of that is?
No, but I'm hearing that it's less than the other. And I see that we have a, the sheriff, um, which means I need to be here.
He, he follows my, he's on the agenda this morning, so he'll be up.
He'll be right after the break. I think what you're talking about is the correlation between people being suspended out of school and when they, or when they leave school, whether voluntarily or by suspension. You leave a Pitt County school early, chances are you're going down to Pitt County Detention Center.
That's what I'm talking about.
I don't know that they have those statistics available today. That's probably something that
It's something we need to consider, you know, because Yeah, it's something we need to consider. We're sending them home and some of the out of school suspension policies are
It might be a good thing to talk to Dr. Linker about maybe an alternative school or something like that. I don't think the jail staff and the manager's going to have that information. Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Williams?
I would ask this. Only a judge can incarcerate. Is that right with his order, right?
That's correct.
Principals and, and guidance counselors can't?
Right, children aren't removed and put in the jail as a matter of discipline unless they've been charged with a crime.
Well, when, when they're out of school suspended for something, some weekend fraction, they go home and, and the parents are working. They are unsupervised and a child is a child and they're going to do something that caused something else on the other hand. That's what I'm talking about.
I think you find agreement. I just think
You to go in and pick them up.
Correct. I, I just think the better person to talk to would probably be Dr. Linker. They're, they're just on the, they're the receivers when it comes to someone getting arrested.
That the two departments, the sheriff department and the school system should look at. That's, I like to see that. If I'm asking that question in the right place, I hope I am. And if I'm not, forgive me for being new, but that's a real sticky place with me. And I thank you all for bearing with, that's the essence of my question and my knowledge.
Thank you. Commissioner Coulson?
Well, piggybacking off what you're saying there is if somebody's done something serious enough to be incarcerated, I doubt seriously they're going to be a good candidate to be a classroom student because they'll be disruptive. And one of the universal complaints of teachers that I hear is that they have two or three disruptive children in their class and they can't get rid of them. The school system does, the administration forces the kids to stay in there and the teachers can't teach. And therefore, they're stealing the, the right of the kids that want to be educated, to be educated. So to just take all these people that regardless of how they have a, a home life or whatever, Mary, and, and you put them back into the schools and say it's less, the unintended consequences are is that the rest of the kids get, get their education taken away from them.
Alternative school would be
Alternative school would be the, the thing that would be needed. I'd like to ask a question about health insurance. I posed this to you the other day, but it's something to, to be thinking about. Employees, when they get to be a certain age are, there, there is an option that could be available through Blue Cross Blue Shield Supplemental and Part D. If the county were to buy supplemental and Part D, the county's portion of the insurance for the individual would be half, maybe even a third of what it is as a standard policy. And the counter side of that is, is that the employee that is so protected actually gets better insurance. They actually will pay less out of pocket as a result of that. So I would encourage the county to look at, well, how can we save money by offering that option to people that reach that particular age?
We looked at that, actually, as I mentioned to you the other day, we, we looked at this a few years back and the problem with that is, that is, is the federal government. They will not allow us, if we have an employee who's 65 or older, they will not allow us to, to make them go on a Medicare supplement.
You're talking about mandate, but if you provide it as an option.
Well, the, the problem is, okay, we're, we're going to pay about plus minus $300 for that Medicare supplement, but the employee then has to buy, to, to fill the donut hole, a plan on top of that at about a cost of 140-ish per month.
That's the supplemental.
Right, because, because that, the Medicare supplement we would buy would not be the same coverage as the health plan that we
But they've got Medicare. Now you buy the supplemental that, that goes with that. That is the difference. That's why you save money. And then the Part D, which is the, is the prescription. So when you, so the county would pay the supplemental, would pay the Part D. The, the person has already got Medicare. And when they're 65, they get Part A. When they're, and when they're 66, they can get Part B and so on. But they'll actually, they're, they're going to have to pay a certain amount of money out of the Medicare anyway. That's mandated by law. So you'd pay, so the county's portion wouldn't be covering the Medicare. That, that's already done, taken care of. What they would be paying is just the supplemental and it's not going to be $300. I know because I pay it and for my wife. And also, it's, the Part D is it comes out to, if you add the two of them together, it comes out to about $250 or they're there about a month. That's less than 626. And the employee or the spouse or whatever would actually get better employer, better insurance. Now, I know you can't mandate it, but if you make it as an option, the county saves money and the employee gets better insurance.
Well, again, Thursday, we're meeting with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We'll bring this up, put it on the table and see what response we get back.
All right. Another thing I'd like to see is on the school budget, whether it be the, the county schools, whether it be the college, community college or whatever. We've got a certain amount of money in there that we project, but that doesn't cover debt service, does it?
No, sir.
I would like to see a number that combines those. Just to see what is it that the overall county is really giving? So if debt service turned out to be 3 million and you give them 35 million, well, you're not really giving them 35. You're giving them 38 million. And it's just a, a convenient number I'd like to see.
It's a substantial number in the, in the millions.
Well, and I think that we ought to, because when people start saying, hey, we're not funding the schools enough, I think if you start to look at that and combine them, they might go, whoa, we're really giving a lot more than what we actually show on that one number. And that's all for me for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens?
Scott, you were directed by this board somewhat by consensus that we wanted you to come back and present a budget that gave increase to the county employees. I think your budget highlights indicate that with the reinstatement of pay for performance, with the reinstatement of certificate of salary increase and the holiday pay.
Certification pay.
Approximately what percentage of increase is that going to give, give an employee? 2%, 1% or whatever? I know it's a variation in it, but just round it off.
Florida, you want to give a stab on this?
Is it too hard a question then?
I would say 50% employees might get 2.4, 50% might get 1.2.
My, my point is that I want to, I think you've done what we requested, but I want to make sure that employees are getting an increase in this budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, next question to that is you mentioned down here, no market adjustment for cost of living. That percentage of increase is going to exceed what a cost of living would have been. Is that correct?
Correct. But keep in mind, in years past, when, when things were better economically, we did both the cost of living and the pay for performance program. They were layered on top of each other.
Okay, so when maybe it could have gone from, if we'd include the cost of living in this budget, then it might be 5% instead of 2 and 5% increase. Is that correct?
No, it'd be, it would be a 1% increase. So the totality of be 1% plus the 1.2, the 2.2 or the 2.4 plus 1 for 3.4.
Now, one more question you got, Mr. Chairman. You have projected here for the recommended budget to include 2 million from the fund balance. Well, our fund balance is what, 20 or 21%?
Projected to be 21%.
Now, is that withdrawal of that 2 million going to keep that fund balance up to 20%?
Yes, sir, because we always, the 2 million always falls back.
I thought that's what you said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Ward?
Thank you for the presentation and this budget for us to look at. One question about the health insurance. And I think you've got a, you know, a good plan. I like hearing what you said, Mr. Coulson, and I'm glad we're going to be looking at that as any kind of savings. The health and wellness plan that we have, I want to make sure I heard this correctly. The people who earn those, was it six points?
Correct.
Then they pay less in. Okay. Could that, because the wellness participation was up, could that be a reason why that our amount of money is down? And I know it also reflected that we've got more now going to the doctor, which doesn't seem to, or I mean, that's just loosely stated, but it doesn't seem to match up if we've got more going to wellness.
Well, we, we really thought four, five years back when we really engaged the employees in the, the screenings for, you know, cholesterol and blood and whatnot, as they learned and more self-identified what their issues were. We thought the health plan costs would, four, five years ago, spike while they initially addressed and then fall back down. They didn't spike as much, but now they're spiking now in this last fiscal year.
Related to the uptick of the economy, which really kind of doesn't make sense, but anyway. Okay, so there's no relationship or do you think there is to that? I mean, should we, should we encourage more participation in the wellness and clinic or?
You could do that by increasing the $56 out of pocket cost higher. We'll, again, we'll, we'll talk to Blue Cross Blue Shield this week and see if they can shed any light as to why they
Because, you know, maybe they could come up with an idea that might encourage, because I think our employees have done a good job in the past. And I still think, as you all have stated, it's one of the best insurance programs or plans, you know, having been in two or three different ones. Thank you.
Mr. Regalh?
Thank you. Scott, I want to thank you first of all for presenting an operating budget without a tax increase. You know, I think it's, it's a, it's a good thing that we can pass on to the citizens of Pitt County a budget that they would not have to pay any additional tax. The other question sort of relates to what Mark was talking about in terms of the employee raise or COLA versus merit. Now, you know, I, I was thinking in my, in my understanding that a merit increase could be subjective in terms of how, and all employees may not get that yet.
Yeah, let me, if I can address that.
The, the other, the other part was that a COLA would be across the board where every, every employee would benefit from, from, from that package. So you want to?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. The, the annual performance review yields a score anywhere between 0 and 5. And a score of 3 is meets, score of 4 is, is exceeds and score of 5 is far exceeds. Depending upon where you are on the salary progression scale, you have to either get a 3 or a 3.55. The far majority, we looked at this several times over in the, in the past years, I'd say probably 98% or greater of our employees receive merit pay. It's only the, the far exceptions and those people who are not meeting either that 3.0 as a meets or 3.55. The ones who have to get a 3.0 are your newer employees who are, who are not, who have not been here very long. The ones who have to get that 3.55 are your more seasoned employees who are, who either have experience that brought into the organization or they've been in the organization a number of years. If, if you're not getting a 3.0, a, a, a 2.0 score is a, how do we couch that, Florida? Yeah, not meeting expectations. You probably don't need to be employed by Pitt County, I guess, is what I'm saying. But the, the good news is though, 98% or greater of our employees meet those benchmarks and beyond and are compensated. You're always going to have a, a certain percentage of employees that maybe their job is not the right fit for them. I mean, you're not going to have, and to be honest with you, I think 98% of the employees to receive merit is much too high. And we've had these conversations in the past with the board that maybe we should only really be compensating some lesser percentage. You know, is that 75%? Is that 80%? Is that 50%? But we've continued this program where the far majority of the employees do receive merit pay. And the, the program does allow me, the, the pay for performance program review system does allow me to, to move those benchmarks so I could move it from 3.0 to something greater and from 3.55 to something greater. But we've held it constant through the years so the employees will know, I've got to get that 3.0. And the way that the performance plan has worked, it works, at the beginning of the fiscal year, every supervisor sits down face to face with their employee and they jointly come up with, on the front end of that instrument, a number of projects they're going to work on. You know, it could be, you know, how many cases you're going to process or you're going to do, create a special ordinance or you're going to do all these things. And it's laid out the benchmarks of how you're going to do it. And the whole, the whole purpose of that is, is to give employees projects that they can accomplish. You're not trying, trying to set anybody up so at the end of the year you can say, gotcha, you know. And I knew you couldn't do it. That's not the, the purpose at all. You want to give them projects they can accomplish. It holds them accountable, it holds you accountable as a supervisor. The back end of that instrument are more your traditional dependability, customer service, supervisory skills if you're a supervisor. And the front end is weighted 40%. The back end is weighted 60%. So you do that plan at the very front end of the year. The employee and the supervisor sign off on that plan. Then six months later theoretically, I mean, you come back, most, everybody everybody does it six months, some are later, but six months, you do an interim review, you check in, the employee tells the supervisor how they're doing on their projects, if they're having problems. If they are, then mitigating factors can be considered, you can then adjust the benchmarks as such. And then at twelve months, at the end of that fiscal year, the employee and the supervisor sit down and do the final review. So the way the system, it's a very cumbersome system for the supervisor, and to a degree for the employee, but it's not like you set a plan up at the beginning of the year, and then twelve months later, you look at it, so how'd you do? It's not that at all. It's year-long, per se.
Yeah, so basically, I'm understanding in that, in that respect, all employees, you said ninety-eight percent, but basically, all employees would get a raise?
Florida, do you agree with that, the percentage? Let's get clarification.
It could be as high as ninety-eight percent. You know, typically, it's going to range somewhere around ninety-five percent. I will agree that, you know, once they hit that midpoint, which is going to be, like you said, about fifty percent of our employees, it does get, be a little more difficult. Shouldn't be, because that means they have more years of experience for that person to obtain that higher score. So are we going to have some employees who are not going to meet the criteria to get a raise? Yes. Answer that is yes.
So you're going to have some that would not get a raise?
That will not.
I guess my question is that, what would be a comparative difference in terms of money, given everyone a COLA, cost of living raise versus merit?
Well, again, a one percent COLA is about five hundred thousand, five hundred three thousand dollars. The cost of doing the merit program is about nine hundred thousand. But part of the, part of the challenge of having employee performance review system these last couple of years through the recession was, there was, there was no end mark for the employees to work towards. Yeah, we did do two days off, then we did two days off and a hundred and fifty dollars. We did some small things to try to keep them motivated, but it really, it kind of dismantles the system to a degree.
Pay for performance.
Go ahead.
Well, one of the things that this board decided to do at the time that there was the recession, trying to scale back to what we called a base, or referred to as a base budget, meaning the bare minimum needed to operate our services. One of the big items that we found that was excluded from that was the pay-for-performance system. So in essence, to exclude merit pay from your base budget means that you don't see that as a fundamental operation of your government. So we felt like we need to include it back in, in our base budget to establish it as part of the floor. Otherwise, we need to decide that it is not a fundamental part of our operations, and we need to exclude it altogether. That's the approach or the philosophy that we operated from.
Could I ask a question that I have, based on what you just asked? What's the possibility that the people, Florida, you may need to weigh in, I don't know, but what's the possibility that the ones who don't make any kind of, you know, raise as far as performance concerned, getting a portion of a COLA? I mean, not enough, you know what I mean? And we did vote on this performance program, and an evaluation performance program is out in every business. It's in the school systems, it's in every business that has, you know, a few employees, because you have to have something to look at at the end of the year when you're budgeting and you're paying. If you've ever been in a position where you have to make those decisions, you want some kind of a guideline, and, you know, so I don't know whether that's a feasible part of it or not, that, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to give enough money to encourage somebody not to participate in the performance, but at least they would get, like, a minimum.
It kind of flies in the face of the program.
Oh, I totally agree with you, because I've functioned in that kind of a area all my life when I was an administrator, but I was just, you know, anyway, just throwing it out there.
May I say something about that? May I say something about that?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I was just sharing with Commissioner Colson something that happened with me, and I worked in a state organization and, for more than twenty years. And merit is subjected based on supervisor. Even though you have the education and the background and the work performance, you get dumped on with the amount of work, and you are never given a raise, and you end up making less than janitor when you have a degree and never get promoted. And those people walk around talking, and it's based on a personality rather than the work performance. So there needs to be something for that person who is providing the work and getting the work done, and getting work added to their job, and never get raises based on a supervisor's personal opinion. There needs the personal opinion. There needs to be something in there to at least say to that person, you are here, you are doing the job, but, and it's under circumstances that you're not getting rewarded. And that's a subjective opinion, and that needs to be built in, and I agree with that.
We do train all of our supervisors...
Because I ended up getting less than janitors.
We do train all of our supervisors in the PEP administration and do that continuously. I mean, one solution would be to identify the five hundred and three thousand dollars to provide all the employees the COLA, but in order to do that at this point, we would have to go back in and trim in areas that we've already expanded, i.e. whether it's public safety, whether it's education. Those are two major areas where we've appropriated new dollars to keep both a one percent COLA as well as reinstituting the pay-for-performance. I would highly recommend, and we will do as you direct, obviously, but I would highly recommend you keep the pay-for-performance in there, because I think it's a, it's just a vital part of creating, what Dwayne was explaining, that getting back to that true base budget, a truly operational position or paradigm for us as a county government.
I think, Ms. McGolden, do you have any further?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Garris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am very supportive of the pay-for-performance, and I appreciate you building it into this budget, and our pay-for-performance for Pitt County is very lenient in that ninety-five percent of the employees get some raise for pay-for-performance. What my background in the private sector, merit raises, ninety-five percent of the people did not get merit raised. But in this system, ninety-five percent does, and I think, and I'm supportive of that, and I appreciate you building it in, and I think it's a good system. Scott, just from my information, and I probably should know this, but what is a reactivation fee on a residence? Because I see that these numbers, they double for the resident, and then for the non-resident, they are four times now, and maybe it's simply what the word implies, I let a permit expire and then I have to reactivate it?
I'm going to let James, ask him to attend this morning, to...
I'm on page eleven.
I have the same note. What time, what time is it reactivating?
Yeah, the frequency of these and such. Yeah, page eleven of your PowerPoint presentation.
Because a new permit should be required if it's too long.
Good morning. We've had a lot of discussion with legal staff about this. When we updated our inspections ordinance last year, there's language in the general statutes, remember, there was a rewrite of the general statutes that pertain to some of these items. What we found out is, the general statutes is very vague about when permits continue to progress on. In other words, if you come in and get a permit, you've got twelve months in which you can commence that work. Now, commence is tough to deal with here at the office. In other words, we've got to go out to verify that. That requires a site visit if it's something that we are not sure that this work has commenced or continued on forward in that twelve-month period of time. So the way that we've been doing it is whether folks have actually requested another inspection. We know we verified at that point that some work has been done, but if someone comes in after that twelve-month period, we've not heard anything from them, maybe in two or three years, we really need to send an inspector out, determine what work's been done, and then determine, based on code, whether that permit can be reactivated. So it requires a site visit, that's why, you know, the way we structured our both residential and non-residential fees is the amount of time it takes to send an inspector out there. Typically, a site inspection is going to cost us a hundred dollars. Get somebody in the car, go out there, and that does not necessarily include the time it takes to go back and review the plans if needed. So what we have been doing is charging fifty dollars as just a permit modification. We're always looking to see whether we're covering our charges. In this case, I do not feel like we are. So what we're recommending is that we enact this, and it is only a handful of permits that come through per year, maybe ten, but it does cause us additional work in sending someone out in the field. So we're trying to be consistent with the fees. We feel like the hundred dollars and two hundred dollars would be sufficient.
Can I add one thing to that as well? That it is in the discussion here, the alternative is to just say that the permit has expired, and then the individual would have to pay for a complete new permit and be subject to the code at the time of the current...
And the code may have become more stringent in that time as well.
Yes, yes. So this is a kinder, gentler approach to the situation about assessing whether or not a permit has expired or can be reacted.
A compromise between our fifty dollars and our full permit price, so we feel like it's meeting it in the middle.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other, one other question, Scott. On the, I'm trying to make my numbers balance here now. If I look at the fund balance on page twelve of the presentation, the difference between the twenty-six seven and the twenty-nine one, that is two point three million dollars. You with me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we should be able to do all of those one-time expenditures on page fourteen, because that only adds up to one point two, plus the CAD system, which I believe on another page was around six hundred.
Well, we've, that's what we put in the CIP. We've gotten proposals in from a high of over a million down to, say, half a million, and fifty percent plus or minus will be non-one-one funds. The one point one percent above twenty percent, I think, is the equivalent of about one point five million dollars. So if that does come true, that we are at twenty-one percent fund balance, yes, we'll be able to handle the majority of those projects.
Did you say the twenty-one versus the twenty is one point one million?
One point five.
One point five?
Yes, sir.
Well, explain to me, sir.
Yes, sir.
On page eleven, I'm twelve, twelve, it says fund balance, available fund balance for two thousand and fourteen, that's calculated nineteen point nine percent, is twenty-six million, seven hundred and seven to seven, and then two thousand and fifteen estimate at twenty-one point one three is twenty-nine million, one hundred and thirty-seven. That's the difference of two point three.
Yes, sir. The reason why is because that fund balance percentage calculation, it looks at the available fund balance against your general fund expenditures. So you'll see a corresponding increase in the expenditures from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen. So it's a function of expenditure.
I understand. Thank you.
Sharp pencil, Jimmy.
Okay. I'm also pleased, Scott, that we were able to do some additional funding to our municipal libraries. I'm disappointed we could not do more, but if you look at it on a percentage basis, it is pretty significant percentage increase, even though the dollar value isn't that much.
And I think we need to keep in mind, I'm hesitant to mention it, but I'll just mention it briefly, we're not, at this point in time, we're not recommending, in terms of the sheriff's dispatch, the functions that he's doing for the municipalities, i.e. Winterville, that are well over the value of a hundred thousand dollars, we're not recommending to address that. So there could be a trade-off in terms of one funding situation versus another.
And of course, the other thing, you looked at all the libraries, and I think that to be fair and equitable with all of our municipalities, we have to look at all of them, and that's what you did, so I appreciate that. As far as education, I'm pleased to see that we were able to increase our funding to Pitt County in this recommended, your recommended budget by two point two percent, and to Pitt Community, three point three percent. Again, I wish that could be more, because if you look at the numbers of our position versus the hundred counties, Pitt County in public education, forty-nine out of a hundred, that's not where we want to be, but that may be where we can only afford to be. And then, of course, at the community level, we're forty-six out of fifty-eight, so we're in a poor position with our community colleges than we are with our K-12. But at least we are projecting increases for both of them.
And just want to point out, with public education, they had a two point one million dollar increase. Half of that is fixed, half of that was expansion. The expansion was for the teacher supplements. What I'm recommending is not the teacher supplements. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is seven hundred and fifty thousand of the million of fixed costs that they have, which they'll come before you explain.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Farland.
Yes, Scott, reference your page ten, one-time expenses.
Yes, sir.
Number five, community schools and rec. It says drainage improvements. Is that i.e. storm drains?
Correct.
Right. To your knowledge, has the county at any time got any payback from the stormwater fees it pays out?
The district park, as I recall, Steph can correct me, but the district park on that side of County Home Road is outside the city, so it's not subject to the stormwater fees. The other side of the road, where the farmer's market, the animal shelter and all that, that's within the corporate limits.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
No, wait, wait. It is in the city limits? Are we paying the stormwater fee?
I have a feeling...
I don't know, that's budgeted. We'll look into that.
I think you should. It is considered...
Was that all your questions?
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Only in city limits?
Was that all your questions, Mr. Farland?
That'll do it.
I've just got a few, Scott. I like what I see for the most part. I think we've come a long way. But when it comes to some of the things, for example, the fiscal year for fourteen fifteen was a hundred and fifty-two, nine eighty-one million, and this year, the request is one fifty-eight, or recommended is one fifty-eight. Even if you take the two and a half million for the fund balance plug and the, which includes the employee medical, that's still three million more than we did last year, and it just feels like we're leaving some things out. You know, I understand the cost of living situation, but I don't think the metric we're using is correct, because they went so long without pay raises that we're basing two thousand and four pay on our two thousand and fifteen situation, on whether or not they're going to get any cost of living. And the health insurance is going up, it's not much, thirty bucks, I think, but it's still something going up. Gas prices are all over the place, food isn't getting any cheaper, nothing is. And so I feel like we're almost putting them in a position to have to sing for their supper. And I like merit pay, because I like pay for performance, and I get that, but I think there also needs to be a baseline that we're achieving, and ensuring that they're being brought up, like we stated at the beginning, talking about human capital. And there's a lot of good things in here. The certification benefits, the pay-for-performance, the holiday pay. I mean, that's great, because especially when you're talking about the folks who don't have an option to take the day off on the holiday, or don't get it off, and especially, most of these people we're talking about are in harm's way. So my concern there is if, you know, we're going to, because there's a lot of hard capital investments in here, too. I would like to see if we could work something out to where there's at least some baseline pay for the employees that won't have the option for the holiday time, that, again, and it's probably not two thousand and four, maybe it's probably more two thousand and eight metric, but still, it's a long time ago to be so far behind, and even with the cost of livings that we've done the past couple of years, it's not, it's not been much. So it's not like we've had this rapid, up-to-speed bring-up in the salaries.
We could probably identify a portion of that five hundred and three thousand dollars to do a one percent overall COLA, but it's going to take some cutting in other areas to identify all, or we're going to be dipping into fund balance that we're not going to be, we're going against that principle.
Stick to the cutting. I'm not worried about the fund balance. I like the fund balance where it's at. I don't mind cutting government very much. I, I don't mind cutting government very much, especially if we're going to benefit the people that are making it work. Uh, moving on to something else, I'm very happy with the fund balance, I do want to mention that, because I don't want this to be all critical, because there's been a lot of great things done over the past five years and, and beyond, and, and I believe in the future. Those are just my comments on that. When it comes to the jail, and, um, if there, what was, what'd you say the average capacity, if we averaged out the blue line, was it four-eighty-five?
Four-eighty-five, four-ninety-five.
And how far is that? Let me find.
Four-sixty is your functional capacity and your...
So at twenty-five over functional capacity, Major, what, how many officers do you have on a shift?
About thirty-two.
Okay. So that's one officer for every eighteen prisoners?
Might be a little higher.
So there, and here's where my concern is, they're operating at one of them to every eighteen criminals, and beyond functional capacity. And then you have the PRIA part of it that's going to come in. It's going to be hard when you're under, that's if everybody shows up to work, correct?
Am I right?
Yes. And you could probably fit that percentage on one hand of how many times that happens.
Again, am I right?
So we're, we're looking at maybe being possibly twenty-four criminals to one jailer. And then you look at the PRIA part, the Prison Rape Elimination Act that we are bound to be a part of. Are we going to be able to pass an audit if we don't have the extra space and we don't have the right proportion of jailers to inmates, because they can't watch everybody all the time? I know that's where the cameras come in, but I'm, I'm concerned about their safety, and even though they're prisoners, they have rights, too, and they have a right to be safe.
Right, some are pre-trial detainees.
Exactly. There's a lot of people in there that have not been convicted of a crime, and I, I'm concerned about the PRIA stuff, and I'm concerned about the officer's safety, most of all.
My, my understanding is that legal has worked with the sheriff and staff, the detention center, and that the PRIA program that, that is in place, with the funding of the classification officer, who will be a PRIA officer, per se, of the system, that we will be compliant. So when the audit comes, and I think the, the detention center staff is calling for an audit, maybe first of...
February.
February of six, two thousand and sixteen, that we will pass that audit and be compliant.
Okay. And, um, and, and just, one thing I think we could address would be, to help with our insurance costs, would be sick time buyback, bringing that, that, that would incentivize people not to take time off. For example, where I work, they do that. And so if I don't feel good, as long as I'm not contagious, I still show up, because I know at the end of the year, I'm going to get paid back for, I think, sixteen hours. And, um, and that keeps me from taking time off, because every time I take time off, it costs my employer money. And then if I use my health insurance, it costs my employer money, when sometimes I just need a little Dayquil and to show up and deal with it. It, but when you're talking about understaffing, especially in, in our public safety departments, and I mention them because that's just what, I'm, I'm, I spend a lot of time in the jail, uh, because of my job. I'm, I'm in there, luckily I can walk out. But, um, but the understaffing, a lot of people are taking sick days just to have a day off, and, and you're talking about being, especially our jailers packed in there with, um, a lot of people who are innocent until proven guilty, and a lot of people are guilty of sin, and they're stuck in there every day, and they're having stuff thrown on them, spit at, and, and, uh, and I, I think we need to address that. And if you look at our, our national law enforcement conversation that we're having, uh, you know, ninety-nine percent of law enforcement officers are excellent, and I, I've had the benefit of serving with some of the finest people, I think, that are on this earth. However, we don't pay them like they're the finest people, and that they, they work in a tough profession. And we want to be able to retain the best professionals with the best temperament and the best people to stay long-term, because turnover is killing us. It's just constant, and it's leaving us behind, and it's not just creating an issue of staffing, it's creating an issue of safety for our public, for our people that are stuck in the jail, and for our people that are imprisoned in our jail. And I, I think out of three million dollars, uh, we got to be able to find something. I know I'm asking a lot, um, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, because I know we're going to move on, and the sheriff's going to have a presentation, and other people will have presentations, we'll have more questions, but those are just my concerns. I just want to put them out there. Like I said, I'm not asking, they're, they're more rhetorical right this second. Uh, one last thing, the dog fee to give up a dog. You know this is an irritation of mine. So you're already renting your pet from the government, but now if you don't want it anymore, you got to pay him to take it back. And it just seems like you're double, I mean, if they've already paid their thirty bucks for three years, I mean, because what we're saying, we're saying it's the offset cost, but that's what that fee's supposed to be, is the offset cost to build stuff and hire staff and...
The, the fee is technically for the expansion of the, of the shelter itself, not necessarily operational costs, because there, there are costs in the, the drugs to euthanize the dog, as well as if we have to board them, the, it used to be seventy-two hours, but now we've increased it to five days. Um, and technically, if you surrender the dog, we can technically put that dog down immediately. Um, we don't have to hold it, because you sign a form saying that you're giving up all rights to the dog.
Right. Well, again, with fees, like I said, nothing ever gets cheaper, and fees never go down, as we've seen in previous slides. But that's all I have. I think for now, we're going to take a five-minute break, let the sheriff prepare for his.
Mr. Chairman?
Ten-minute break. Uh, Mr. Hammond, did you have another question?
Yes, preserving the right to speak out there.
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
I want to ask this, if it's all right. Concerning the employee's help program, I see good news and not-so-good news in there, and, uh, I want to ask Scott about, the good news first is that them rates have not changed in six years. The wellness program is action, active and thriving. But right under there, it said not-so-good news, utilization is rather, is up rather dramatically, expenses are exceeding revenue, and the fund balance is projected to be broke by six-thirty, six-thirty-fifteen. Is that, is that, is that saying that like it's supposed to sound?
Yes, sir. That's what I was explaining, that the different measures that we're recommending to shore up the, the self-insured program, such as raising the rates, changing the deductibles as, as outlined, and also allowing staff to further examine it. Again, we're going to talk to Blue Cross Blue Shield this Thursday to see if there are other measures that they could identify to help us drive utilization down.
Well, my concern is the depletion of the fund balance by June the thirtieth of, of this year.
We, we have a recommendation before you to transfer some funds in there from your workers' comp fund, as well as make an additional fund balance appropriation above your twenty percent benchmark for fund balance, that will help shore up that, that fund balance. So it shouldn't be an issue.
Where would no fund come from?
Five-hundred-thousand dollars, plus or minus from the workers' comp fund, again, half a million dollars from your fund balance that's greater than twenty percent that we've identified would be, um, two primary sources.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll be at a break for ten minutes.
Great place for a vote.
All right, good morning, we're back for our budget hearings. Next up, we'll have the sheriff. Sheriff, I believe in staying on time, so you've got ten minutes, and that'll get us to let him pitch.
You go ahead and prove everything, I'll be ready to leave.
Sure. Now, go ahead, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for everybody attending and giving us this opportunity to become members of this board. Some of you are new members in our first budget year, we welcome you. Excited about having an opportunity to come before you. First of all, I'd like to thank the manager, his staff, for making this present year an easier year to work with on our money compared to the last years we've had in the past since two thousand and ten. We all reminded of the struggles we've had to go through, the tightening of the belts, making the cars last, stretching the dollar, making the ammo last till next year. But, um, I'd like to thank you for this year, working with us, and as well as he has and his staff. Dwayne's done a great job in working with us, and the preparing of this year's budget has been painless compared to the last couple of years. So I feel like the county's moving forward. We've made some great progress in the years here. Uh, I think the taxes we're seeing are, are increased, we're all glad for that. So I'd like to start with my presentation, if you would. Uh, the calendar year two thousand and fourteen, basically, we run through our responsibilities here, remind everybody we're here to protect and to serve the citizens of Pitt County. Uh, we're twenty-four-hour a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Pick up the phone, dial nine-one-one, dial the sheriff's office, you'll always get a pleasant voice and an answer there, how, how may we help you? Our main concern is to protect life and property. We respond to every citizen's call for service, whether it be the cat in a tree, or whether it be a burglary in progress. Uh, we treat citizens with dignity and fairness and respect. We allow nothing less than that from our employees to our citizens. Our citizens are our customers. That's who we serve, that's who pays our salary, that's who elects me as sheriff. We conduct thorough investigation to bring justice for our victims and our families. One of our responsibilities, we man the jail. We house prisoners for state and federal courts according to the laws and regulations. The sheriff has approximately three-hundred-and-fifty employees. Uh, last time I figured that's thirty-five percent of the, uh, local government employees work for the sheriff. Um, and also, we're responsible for courthouse security. We have to provide a safe environment for our citizens to come in, for our judges to operate, and our lawyers to be able to represent their clients. Uh, the sheriff's also responsible for the sex offender registry by North Carolina Law. I have approximately two-hundred-and-eighty sex offenders. I have to know their whereabouts, I have to make sure they're in compliance with the law. We do random checks. I think the law requires yearly, I think we do monthly, to make sure, and then in violation, we see warrants, we go after them, we locate them. We've gone as far as Canada border to bring them back for, for justice. So we, we take that very serious. It's a great threat to our community, to our children, to our citizens. Sheriff's also responsible for civil process. That means every civil paper that's taken out in this county, whether it be a judgment, a master summons, a lawsuit, it's up to the sheriff to serve that. We take great pride in our service. We take pride in our percentages of servicing papers. That brings a great revenue to the county. People take out papers, we serve them, they don't mind paying the thirty dollars for that processing fee. We have a high percentage rate of that. It brings in a tune, varies from year to year, from five-hundred to seven, eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year that we bring in on that. We have a squad, that's all they do. The sheriff by law is ordered to serve all DV, domestic violence protective orders. We have to serve those. It's a civil paper that's issued by the judge for us to serve. The sheriff's also responsible for concealed carry permits. It's a great task on us, it's a good revenue for the county, uh, it's a lot of responsibility. We take that responsibility seriously. We do a thorough background check on everybody that's issued a permit. If I stamp my name on that, we're very confident that person meets all standards. Every now and then, we get a, a notice that, uh, something has slipped by through a cross-reference in a file, and we have to go out and revoke those concealed carry permits from time to time. So we make sure that, uh, the people that need the concealed carry, that qualify or their guns are put in the right hands. Also, with the, um, purchase permit as well, one thing we've done this year, we put that online, uh, people can apply online, uh, we have a person sitting in front of computer that does a background check on that. It saves them that first trip of having to come to the office. It costs them, I think, a two-dollar fee. They pay it online, it's five-dollar for the permit, two dollars for the fee. Uh, people seem to really enjoy that, because they don't have to come in, find a place to park, come in, apply for a permit, and come back and pick it up. Now they make one trip, um, to the sheriff's office, and they're able to pick that up. So that's an additional service we've done, and also it's taking some of the load off our employees as well. The sheriff's also responsible for electronic monitoring. Um, we can monitor up to a hundred, um, inmates. We take them out of the jail, they meet standards, we put them on electronic monitoring, we have officers that check them daily, they wear bracelets, they know their whereabouts, we set zones up on them in different circumstances that are required by the court order, they be monitored. Just a few of the things that we're responsible for. Demands for service, we received over twenty-nine-hundred applications for purchase permits last year. And permits are good for five years, so you can kind of look back five years ago and predict what this year's going to be about, plus any additions. Uh, our calculation's probably ninety-five to a hundred percent of people renew on these permits. So you can look back at five years where we were, and you can figure the new ones we're going to be issuing now. Supposedly, the Sheriff's Association has awarded us with electronic, um, inkless printer, uh, inkless fingerprint printer. And by doing that, that would no longer require the renewals to come in and have to be re-fingerprinted. As it stands now, every time a renewal comes in, I have to re-fingerprint them on the old system, which is a paper system. So hopefully, we'll have that in place, and that will eliminate some of the stress off of our employees, as well as the citizens coming in for, uh, gun permit. Uh, we, I noticed here in, in the narrative here, we've had an increase of a hundred-and-fifty percent increase of demands for concealed carry since, uh, two thousand and eleven. The numbers are there. We have a lot of people that show a lot of interest in our Citizens Academy we teach. We teach that two to three times a year. We have approximately, uh, twenty-five to fifty people come through that academy. It's about a ten-week academy. Um, it gives them a better understanding of what we do, and helps them understand. Oftentimes, they've become some of our best cheerleaders for the sheriff's office and what we do. They had no idea what responsibilities of the sheriffs are. Go on. Oh, yeah, and most of the time out of that, we end up picking up half of them for volunteers. We have a tremendous volunteer force, probably fifty or sixty people that volunteer, not counting chaplains, but just people that volunteer. I have a man that comes in and does fingerprints every Tuesday and Thursday. I have two volunteers that do that, and that saves the county a bunch of money. We have, uh, people to come in and coordinate different services that we do. The citizens check. We have a, a group of people that come in every day, they call these citizens, they check, I mean, they're seniors, they check on our seniors, making sure they're okay, the ones that are homebound. Oftentimes, our seniors are sitting there, and that's the only phone call they get during that day. Uh, we've lost one or two this year that actually died of natural causes, and, um, you know, we miss them greatly. They were ones our volunteers look forward to seeing them every day. I guess something here didn't... Okay. Okay, Leah, let me talk about our calls for service. We have eleven-thousand-six-hundred calls for service from citizens this past year. Like I said, if a citizen calls the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, we send a deputy, whether it be, uh, we don't screen calls, we don't, um, say, well, we've been out there three times, we're not going to go back out there. And if citizens call, they get a deputy. But our fix to that is, we try to fix their problem. Um, a lot of our calls are concerning the new dog, the dog lease laws and stuff, excuse me. Uh, we call about that. A lot of times, a neighbor has to call two or three times, and we get them to understanding that who they need to report that incident to, and, and we usually try to bring some resolution to their calls. Uh, we did over thirty-two thousand business checks, that's been recorded in our computers. What that means is nighttime on patrol, daytime as well, we pull up in businesses parking lot, we check their businesses, make sure their business is secure, make sure no crimes occurring there, no break-ins occurring. We've had over five-thousand-six-hundred reports of criminal activity. That's a five percent increase. Um, our crime rates are down. You heard what Greenwood says, theirs were, I'm proud to say, and it's unbelievably, and it's true, I've checked, that we're down fourteen percent this year. Every year, we've had a decrease of crime, except for the first year, we took office, we were up one percent. And I blame that on our reporting, the way we're reporting our crimes. So we, we set the trend of how we're going to report our crimes and how we can predict our, um, our, our calls and our crime rate. Uh, violent crimes are down twelve percent, issue more violent crimes, robbery, murders, serious assaults. Nonviolent crimes are, are down fifteen percent. Uh, like I said earlier, we process a lot of papers, we processed over twenty-three-thousand civil process papers, received over twenty-nine-hundred applications for gun permits. If anybody wants to ask me a question, I don't mind stopping while we're here, or we can go forward, I'll keep on going to our here, otherwise, from the chairman. Going on. Okay. Uh, requested budget positions here. We requested four deputy positions, one for each patrol shift. Um, we hear a lot about our gang activities, and we realize that gangs are, um, in our community. A lot of times, um, you hear more crimes occurring in the city involving gangs, but our intelligence shows us that oftentimes, they go out into the rural areas where they can blend, and they'll rent a house, or they'll buy a house, and they'll live out there and blend in with the community where they're not recognized. Generally, then they go back into the populated areas and where they'll commit their crimes. Um, I think there's so much information that we're missing by not having people focus on the intelligence that's there, that needs to be received from that. And we're proposing for four positions. That's their main focus, is to work on violent crimes and gang activities as well. We made a request on that, and the manager's recommendation is zero on that, and we requested three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars to fund that. That could be a little negotiable. We could do out maybe some marked cars and manage with some unmarked stakeout vehicles we have right now to next year's budget if we have to. But I just feel like y'all need to know that request. I think we need to meet the needs of our gang intelligences out there. We have lots of ways of gathering intelligence. I don't care to say publicly. Mr. Webb's aware of a lot of them. But a lot of resources, a lot of things we're missing by not having the manpower to staff that. We requested one finance tech. Ms. Donna stands alone. She's a person that manages a lot. We have twenty-eight and a half million dollar budget. It's all we can do to keep up with the grants that we receive. They require a lot of attention monthly, a lot of reporting factors, a lot of data. She has to fill out purchase orders. She has to meet the needs of her job and requiring her to be accurate in accountable principles. We just feel like she needs some help. I called, last night I got an email from at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. She's working continuously concerned, be honest with you, about her help. But she's a straight salary employee. Maybe I should do a favor and put her back as a non-exent. So, but anyway, county wouldn't allow me to do that. But in all seriousness, she needs some help. We need to start training somebody for her replacement. It's a lot more things we could venture into. We need to, we're finding ourselves, the first years, we were really getting into buying power, bargaining with our vendors, but finding that we're not having time to do that. I liked the model we set up the first year or two, where we were able to go out and say, hey, I got a hundred and sixty vehicles. What are you going to change my oil for? What are you going, why am I going to sell my tires for? Same thing with the phone systems. I've got three, two hundred phones. What are you going to give me a phone service for? And you, and you go out and you shop that. Right now, we're dealing with three hundred and fifty pairs of shoes I have to buy a year. Well, this is the price that they sell them for. What are you going to sell them to me for? Because I'm going to guarantee you three hundred and fifty pairs of shoes once, sometimes twice a year. So you got to be able to venture into that, and the cost savings that we're looking at is going to be a fraction of the cost to hire that person versus the gains that a county stands to gain. It's all about stretching the county dollar, being more, and looking at our vendors throughout the jail, whether it be the health, healthcare services, whether it be our vendors that bring our canteen. We need somebody to stay on top of that. You know, dealing with the budget we got, one person can't manage that, management, fleet management, our fuel costs, our repairs, we have a lot. But we've done really good in keeping our vehicle repairs down. But as ways, things have changed, Ms. Donna, there's no way anywhere she can keep up with what she has to do. So I'm asking for that position to be considered. Been denied by the manager, and I'm still asking you if you would to consider that. Okay, the next position the manager spoke to you guys about, the two pre-trial enforcement detectives. They were grant positions. The manager is recommending for those positions be picked up. They will spend a hundred percent of their time doing domestic violence related cases. We've seen great results from that. They actually stand on top of the, the cases more, staying in contact with the victims and allowing the suspects, the perpetrators, to talk the victims out of prosecution. We pick up cases that could end up, and have the profile or potential to end up in a death investigation. These guys really focus on that, and they really do a great job on that. I contribute our homicide rate decrease. We had one homicide last year. It was five hundred feet from the city limits. I couldn't quite get it into city limits. We would, but I contribute our decrease in our violent crimes to some of these investigative special units that we do. We're requesting security checkpoints. We're requesting that we're going to need one deputy and two part-time contract security people to do that. Yeah, I think the manager has recommended on the one-time purchase for the scanner. This is going to be the personnel that we need to operate that. Wish I'd included some pictures we took during the peak towns. We had eighteen, nineteen hundred people at nine o'clock in the morning waiting to go into the courthouse. We had to deploy resources from every angle of the sheriff's offices, including my command staff, myself, to help keep the security in the courthouse. By doing the checkpoints, we can, we can move that crowd faster. There's some changes that are happening to be made through the scheduling of the court cases. We all know that eighteen hundred people in a courthouse environment with charges, a lot of them could be traffic, but you've got a lot of gang activities, a lot of gang people there. You've got serious charges in the courtroom. You put them all in that hallway right outside the courtroom, it feels like you're in a crowded bar room waiting for something bad to happen. So we're requesting that, that's a one hundred and sixteen thousand dollar request to cover that for the whole entire project. Is that including the scanner too? Okay, so you were back out to fifty thousand out of that price that the manager is requesting for the one-time purchase for the scanner. We've talked about vehicles. We all know that the vehicle is a very important tool for us. We were twenty-four hours a day. This past year, we received eleven vehicles. We feel like we need a minimum of fifteen more this year to keep up. Just remind you, two thousand and ten, eleven, it was several years there we bought, no purchase any vehicles out of county fund, and we did buy some out of asset forfeiture money. But we need to be mindful of our fleet. You know, we approximately have a hundred and sixty vehicles that we're responsible for, and you do ten or twelve a year. There's no way anywhere you can keep up with that. We've been able, this year, we consider it a blessing, but it's, the gas prices have dropped this year. So the manager has allowed us to move some of that excess money over to buy four additional vehicles, and there's still some possibility, maybe we could buy one or two out of that surplus money out of the vehicle maintenance fund. And by keeping our costs down, this year, we've been very lucky. We haven't had any major wrecks, that, that money comes out of that. If we wreck a patrol car, it's total, it's our fault, and it's thirty thousand dollars we have to come up with out of our vehicle, a replacement fund, since the county is self-insured. So we have to replace our vehicles if it's our fault. The couple wrecks we had, and I think it was somebody else's fault, and we got reimbursed for a vehicle or two this year. Like I said, I got over thirty-seven vehicles with over a hundred thousand miles on it. To give you an example, we just give one of our Crown Vics that had, had some age on it, a lot of miles, eighty-seven thousand miles on it, and I gave it to transport. These guys run mental commitments all over the state. Heard them check back in the county last night with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand miles on that car, and that's been about eight months. So that's how much these guys roll. They, they roll with our involuntary commitments. They allow it to be in Morgan, they allow it to be in Winston-Salem, they allow it to be in Raleigh. They on-call, they're part-time employees, but they do a lot of transporting of our mental commitments. That's another thing that the sheriff's responsible for, is the transportation of the mental commitments throughout the state. Just to give you a quick breakdown of vehicles, I have six vehicles with a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles. I have twenty-four with a hundred and fifty thousand miles. I have forty-six with a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And, what's next there? With a hundred thousand miles, we have a hundred and twenty-three cars total. And under a hundred thousand, I got seventy-six. So we've been able to keep our cars in our frontline response to patrol cars. And once they move out, we may move them to another division within the department. Sad to say, the school resource officers generally get the cars that we no longer using our patrol fleet. They get passed down to them, which, good thing about it is they keep the maintenance up on that. They find it's cheaper for them to just keep the maintenance up on the vehicles versus buying new vehicles. You know, we still feel like the vehicles are somewhat safe if they willing to spend three or four thousand dollars a year repairing the cars and keeping the shocks under the cars and the transmissions in them. Like I said, again, that's their choice, that's what they want to do, so we furnish them our surplus vehicles to use. And just to give you a quick breakdown of our years of cars, in two thousand and fifteen, we bought thirteen. Two thousand and fourteen, we bought twelve. Two thousand and thirteen, we purchased eight. That's probably the year we did the asset forfeitures. Excuse me?
Do we have that report in here?
I don't think so. I'd be glad to make you a copy of it.
Oh, okay. I was just looking for it, that's all.
That's fine. I'll be glad to make you a copy of that. It's just some extra stuff I challenged her to come up with last night, so after we put this together. Okay, we actually, we have forty-six vehicles that are, every day, that are two thousand models and older. Most of those in a, may be in an admin position or support system at the jail or something for a vehicle to, they're not a frontline vehicle. Next slide I made for you is, is a, yeah, I think I skipped one. I put together something for you on a salary comparison. We've, we've heard our salaries where we are, and I just want to really give you something to look at. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this today, but I think it's something I'd like to challenge you guys with to look at. For me to retain and keep officers, I am fighting every day to retain and keep officers, recruit out of BLT. I promised in my campaign that I would mirror my community. What I mean by that, I will, I will have officers that look like our community. I'll have males, females, African-Americans, I'll have Hispanics. I have officers out there. When you go to the BLT academy and you see your, and your, your choices are very low. Greenwood PD, Wilson PD, other PDs are going to swipe up these officers just like this and get them. I can't seem to get, the salaries attractive enough that we can get to pick the cream of the crop. You know, I've sent officers from the detention center to BLT. I have to pay for them to go.
What's BLT?
Basic law enforcement training. It's a certificate required by the state for them to have to be a certified officer. So... So I want you to look at the salaries compared to the Greenwood Police Department. I think we need to look at what our market is here. Oftentimes, you guys will order a study, where we'll go to the western part of the state. We'll go somewhere else, or we'll go to a county outsized. This is where our tax base is. This is where we buy our gas at. Everybody knows Greenwood's got gas higher than anywhere else. We all know that this is where you pay your rent at. This is where you buy your groceries at. So you know, this is our market here. You know, next slide, I just thought it'd be curious to put before you a paste of one of our deputies. He makes thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. He's been here since two thousand and eight, and this is his salary. He's on pay grade sixty-five, step five. Greenwood Police Department, they hire their officer pretty much the same thing that we're at. After they complete their one-year period and get their BLT certificate, they could experience up to an eight thousand to ten thousand dollar pay increase in one year. That's where I get left behind. I have officers that walk right out and leave and go to a, to Greenwood Police Department. You can't blame them. These are young officers. They got families, they got daycare they have to pay. All right, if you go to the next slide, this is an officer here that clears seven hundred and fifteen dollars every two weeks. Why? Because he pays two hundred and ninety-eight dollars every two weeks in his insurance. Yes, he enjoys his insurance. He gets the county benefit. But what I'm saying is, how can we expect these officers to live off this kind of money? Fortunately enough, we have several contracts that allow them to work off-duty. It saddens me that I have officers that work twenty and thirty hours every two weeks, a contract service, whether it be Waterby Jones or Thomas Pro Park, an off-duty job, just to meet their needs. So to give you some idea, who can raise a family? This particular guy has a daycare. He's a young married man. Like I said, he's been here since two thousand and eight, and, and he's drawing, no, he's, that's two thousand and twelve, and he's drawing seven hundred and fifteen dollars take-home pay every two weeks. We all know the average rent's going to be seven, eight hundred dollars a month. Okay, in the previous study here, where it says two thousand and eight, there's been no pay increase other than the little step raises or the cost of living raises we got. We all, we all realize we've been through tough economic times. But like Mr. Webb mentioned earlier, we need to catch up. We need to get these guys in a position that they are attractive to law enforcement. You know, we hear a lot of negativism about law enforcement across the country. Everybody wants to paint anybody with a broad brush, but we know that's not true. We know that we have an excellent law enforcement community here. Our guys take a lot of pride, they make a lot of sacrifices. Myself, when I started going to law enforcement, my mama tried her best to talk me out of it. She said, you know, your daddy worked every job there was to make ends meet. Why? We were professionals. These are officers that can lose their job and lose their life in a, in a matter of minutes. They can, we had a New York police officer killed yesterday. I've had two officer-involved shootings this year, and officers had to shoot people this year. So we're not immune, and we're not distanced from it happening here. Last year, we had a New Bern police officer gunned down. It happens every day. We find guns on the street every day. You know, our guys are, we're training them, we're giving them the opportunity to learn, to be skilled, and protecting yourself. But I just want us to look at, what are we willing to pay the officers that risk their lives for our community? They're twenty-four hours a day. They, they're always out there, they're willing to respond. They will run in and save a life of a person that we don't have a clue who it is. It's like with Norcan. We saved a couple of lives in the AEDs this year. We run in, we give mouth-to-mouth to a person laying on the ground that's got a needle stuck in his arm. We don't look at him and say, why you wasting time on him? We saved his life. We don't know who he is. We'll run into a house on fire, we'll run into a gun battle and save that person's life. How many other people throughout county government are willing to make that sacrifice? It's what we do. We believe in our badge, we believe in what we stand for. So I'm asking you, at least consider paying them considerable what the other agencies in the county pay. I hired a guy, I hired two officers from Winnable, with three years' experience. They took an eighteen hundred dollar pay cut to come work for the sheriff. You ask yourself why? They wanted room for advancement. They were young enough that they thought they could recover from it. They could get back on track, advance into detectives, narcotics, and more room for advancement through a larger agency. They're some great officers, but I can't attract those officers if I ain't got the money to get them. I would love to be, no longer be the training ground. Let me be the person that's benefiting from the officers that have been trained by Farmville, Winnable, and these smaller agencies. But they're, they're going there, and they're choosing not to even consider the sheriff's office as an option because of the starting pay and the longevity. Okay, well, the example I was just giving you, where the officer takes home seven hundred and fifteen dollars, his weekly pay is three hundred and sixty-two dollars, tack daycare on top of that, and any, any other needs you may have to have, you know, they're struggling to live. Just want, I just want you guys to consider, what are they worth to the county? Let's try to consider that this year. Overtime. We really work hard in policing our overtime. We try to manage that. My rule of thumb is, if I'm going to call you out on a Saturday or Sunday to take a call, whether it be an investigator or work overtime, work extra duty, I think you should be compensated for that. I don't want to give you comp time, but I didn't have time, I don't have time to give you comp time because I'm so short with a manpower. Anyway, why would I want to kick the can further down the road? So we, we feel like we need to pay our officers overtime. This year has been very stressful. We've had a lot of, lot of open positions this year. We've got a lot of lap salary, but the manager has been gracious enough to let us transfer some of our lap salary over to, to paying that, the shortage this year. But our actual year-to-date expenses were a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Is that one or that one? Okay. So we actually requested, yeah, we actually requested two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars this year in overtime. One thing, the big drawback for us is communications requires their workday schedule. One week, they work in six hours of overtime. They have to, still in the eighty, it's eighty point five hours, but the week, by the wage and hour, and Florida can talk about this, but it's, I have to pay them time and a half for six of those hours. So that's sixty thousand dollars a year of my overtime. I have no control of it, I can't complete this, this predictable, it's built in. It's been suggested maybe we put that on a separate line item and show it's communications overtime. But according to their, their hours they work, the pattern they work, it's compared to the nine-one-one center, they get the same benefit. I think it's only fair that we get the same benefit from that. So if you track the sixty thousand right out of the top of the recommendations of a hundred and ninety, that only was very much for a hundred and sixty employees or twenty-four-hour service where we may have to go out. We do a lot of mutual aid for other departments. We do a lot of, we're short, we're short on shift, where I have to call people in to work. Like I said, I definitely don't need to comp them, I need to be able to pay them overtime. If they are working a break-in or something, and their shift ended at six, it's an hour or two, we comp it. If it's three or four hours, I want to make it worth their while staying out, being away from their family, and paying them that. I just wish there'd be some consideration on that, to take that into consideration. Next page, a lot of detail, but you have a copy of that. I like to just basically take a look at that. It shows our fees, our revenues. If you would, just take a minute and look over that. Now, SRO reimbursement, the second item from the bottom, that's basically where we build the school resource officers, build the school board, and they reimburse their salaries for that. Sheriff Contract Services is basically in and out, and it's where we bill Waterby Jones for the security that we provide them, they pay us back. Look at your gun permit fees. Look at your concealed carry permit fees we get. Electronic monitoring, we don't really collect a lot from that because most of those people are indigent, they don't have the money to pay. We still find it's cheaper to get them out of jail at eighty dollars a day versus, I think it's fifteen bucks a day to monitor them. Gun storage fees. Foreclosure fees is what they are. Two years ago, they were really high. I think a lot of your foreclosures have tapered off. We're projecting five thousand two hundred next year on that. Any questions on that before I move on? Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to the detention center. I know it's been talked about for years, about opening up detention center. Basically, I'm going to put the ball back in your court, let you decide what we want to do. We at a, we at the level right now, we at maximum functioning capacity. We hear that word talked a lot. I think Ms. Williams was maybe concerned about, it bothers me when I had to put inmates on the floor. Well, some people say, well, they deserve to live on the floor. First of all, that's, everybody's not convicted, it's in jail. Some people are there for different circumstances, but always remember that somebody's husband... Some people are there for different circumstances, but always remember that somebody's husband, brother, sister, child, or somebody that's in there. Another concern I have is overcrowdness. We have tempers that are flying while they're in jail. Now I'm concerned about officer's safety. I'm concerned about my officers getting injured while they're on duty because right now, me and her can stand here together, but put four of us up here, and you're gonna be in my space, you're in my space, and now attitudes start flying. The cleanliness is not there the way I want it to be, and overcrowdness. So, one good thing that we get to enjoy is, we enjoy our income from our federal inmates. We project the next year revenue being at seventy a day, but right now, we got a spike. I got eighty-two today. And that could last, how long that's gonna last? The feds really like our program. They like what we do. They like the way we pick our prisoners up. They like the way we transport. They like our medical. They like the visitation system we have. They like being able to come down and talk to them in interview rooms. So, we're the pick of the litter when it comes to feds. Don't like to talk about it openly, but the reason being because the other sheriffs in the state here, and then they won't know why the sheriff in Pitt County has so many. But, it's what it is. We provide a good service. We have a great relationship with the Marshal Service. We have a federal courthouse here in Greenville. Could that grow? Yes, it could. Could it decrease? Yes, it could. It's a roll of the dice. It's all about providing the service that they want, that we can get that guaranteed inmates there. You look at your daily population count, and there's such thing as a state misdemeanor program. You know, we at the number right now, if we could open up, I could see us being at five twenty-five, five-thirty tomorrow, just like that. But, there's other ways that we could cover some of the income on that. State misdemeanor program would house up to, would pay me fifty dollars, I think it's forty-nine dollars a day, to house their inmates. So, we could, if we got beds that are sitting there empty, I think we could explore the possibility of housing them. That would be a lot of extra work on my staff, but if the county feels like we at the, we at the margin that we need to go in step this year, this is what we can do. If we get too big a increase, we'll just have to cut back on our federal inmates. So basically, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys. Do you want to step out this year and fund it? Or do you want to wait another year? I do have the flexibility of the federal inmates to cut back. It's gonna show my end revenue shortage, but it's just where we at. It's a decision you guys need to think about. I asked you any questions you got. You're welcome to talk to my ma, uh, major about it. But, you know, one of these days, we're gonna need to open that up. You know, whether it be this year, next year, probably should've been last year, but, you know, it's a lot of extra work on our staff, just the recruitment and having to hire officers. It takes me two to three months to get one officer hired. We spend approximately a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars per officer getting them hired. And that was another thing I wanted to mention when I was talking about recruitment a while ago, is, is the fact that the money and the time we spend on recruiting people, the jail was so short-staffed this year that their overtime budget was through the roof, embarrassingly through the roof. Because why? They didn't have enough officers working to meet the needs of the minimum staffing there. Eight positions. It took me three to four months to get qualified people to hire in those positions. You saw officers working five and six days in a row. We're having to pay them overtime, hour before hour of working. We saw officers calling in sick because the workload was so great. So that's what it's all about. We've got to figure out a way to retain our officers, keep our officers trained. Now their factories are opening back up, and you see an expansion. I'm losing officers just like this every day that are going to a better-paying job. That's why they came here, because their factory was closing down. They already told us once they opened back up, they're leaving. So we've got to retain and keep our officers. It bothers me when we have, we're down to a minimum staffing, and somebody was to get hurt. It bothered me that night that the prisoners know when we're short. They, they, they know when to take advantage of a situation. They knew that tonight's the night that we can sucker punch Deputy X walking down the hall, and it happens weekly. These guys get assaulted. They get urine thrown on them, E C's thrown on them. They get trays thrown at them. That's why we try to work in forces. That environment is not the most pleasant environment in the world. When I hired detention officers, I tell them, I say, "You have to be more dedicated than the deputy sheriff I hire." Because why? Because the deputy can go by and check on his house tonight, make sure it's all right. He can go by and make sure the kid got a ride to daycare if he needs to. Anything that could be personal, but that detention officer has to be so mindset when he comes, he has to know, he has to stay the whole night. He can't leave. He's not allowed to use the phone except on his breaks. We don't allow cell phones in our facilities. They, they have to be more committed than the average law enforcement officer. And then not only that, they're subject to the, the misbehavior of this confinement that they're in every day. So, I say that to say this, I really appreciate detention officers we got, and I appreciate their dedication and, and willing to help keep the citizens of Pitt County safe. I really appreciate them a lot of times. They're out there. People don't recognize them, and they do a great job. I just want to say that publicly. Anything else on that? And to fund that position, if we go to it, you know, we're gonna request four, I think I skipped the first page. Well, anyway, let me, we were talking about that, that to open, it would cost twelve detention, it would require twelve detention officers to open up detention block. It's already there. Mattress is there. Air conditioning system's in place. The kitchen's designed to feed more than that. We've designed a feed of a thousand people. So, the increased cost would be your medical, your staffing, and your food costs. And only that's requiring three officers per shift. The way our, our blocks are set up, Ms. Williams, you'll see next week, is you have a pod that you sit in, and you, and you look around the whole entire pod. You can see multiple prisons. Pretty neat. You got three officers that can watch and take care of ninety-six employees, ninety-six inmates. But when they have to respond to emergency, go down and check, they have a system in place where they have a quick response, and people will come to them and help them respond to that. And along with that, we'd have to have four sergeants as well, and it's listed here, to oversee and make sure everything's done right. And I think the total cost, the manager was mentioning a million and a half, and my people seem to think we can do it maybe two hundred thousand dollars cheaper than that. That's what my major was mentioning a while ago. So I think if we were challenged with opening the jail, we would sharpen our pencils as tight as we can and try to give you a real good figure on that, what we think. As an option B, maybe consider opening it up in January of next year. Maybe we can get by another half a year. I think we're at the mark right now. You guys, the county commissioners are gonna need to make the decision whether we open it up or not. You know, I'll, I'll do what I can. I'll try to keep the population down, but I don't want to, we got to decide if it's more important to keep, continue housing the federal inmates and enjoying the revenue off that, or is, I don't feel like we can leap into the new jail today and open it up and fill the capacity. I think, but we, we stand a chance of increasing our federal count. We stand a chance of increasing. We can definitely participate in the state misdemeanor program. We choose not to because of our capacity right now. Excuse me. And, and if we're gonna take on a new jail, we're also gonna request a, a maintenance tech. That's a full-time job. We have maintenance techs now to assign different locations. Every one of them has a pod or area of the jail. They keep a, and that would be a necessity. That's a fifty-three thousand dollar request. We would go along with that. Be surprised at the service calls they, they get out there from stuff being flushed down the toilet, the towels, blankets, deliberately tearing stuff up, doors not working properly. So it's a full-time job. They really keep themselves busy, keeping the showers up to date. We've been doing that, and we started that project last year, and that's a big cost to us, but our maintenance guys have started doing that on their own versus subbing that out. Uh, the manager mentioned the Pre-Prison Rape Elimination Act. I agree that we need to have a person that does the screening for that, intake officer for that. No, no, this is training. I'm sorry. This is training. My screen's wrong. I'm sorry. I went to the wrong screen. Excuse me. Okay, the Pre-Classification Position has been recommended by the manager for that. We have to stay up on top of that according to the federal law. We are prepared for that. We started training on that. We just need to make sure that, be in the guidelines of that, and we will be in guidelines by February. And we've asked for, the next page, we've asked for some training, additional training for that. Currently, our, the manager's recommendation's eleven thousand. We feel like we need eighteen thousand to, to cover the cost of that. Basically, the cost is allocated a day of sixty-four dollars a person to get them trained in pre-readyness. Yeah. Well, she just let me know that that's for all the training throughout the year. Any training they would get would be sixty-four dollars a person for the whole entire year. They have a lot of requirements. They have to be, they have to do taser, they have to do pepper spray, they have to do the in-service training, a lot of, in, a lot of costs just in the taser cartridges, the, and the pepper spray, and different things they have to be exposed to. The manager mentioned about the jail van. We're requesting two of the jail vans for the consideration. You see at the bottom, we have a two thousand and seven Ford with over two hundred and twenty-three thousand miles on it. We have a two thousand and nine Ford van with a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles on it. Within the last two weeks, we had one breakdown somewhere around Greensboro. We had inmates on it, and we had to call for a record to come get it, and the local facility to come, mean, house those prisoners until we were able to find some relief. There's, next sheet is gonna give you a breakdown. You can look at about our revenues that we receive. This year, we received one million, nine hundred, five thousand dollars in federal inmates. We lowered our number to seventy this year for our projected income to be on the safe side. The what? Okay, it was sixty-five. We upped it to seventy this year. So actually, we exceeded our amounts last year. You know, and like right now, we're at eighty-two or three. You know, do, could we go over that in the future? I feel very good. We probably will. I don't want to over-project my revenues on that. I don't want to come up short at the end of the year. See if I got any questions about the fees, the medical fees and stuff? You see, we telephone commissions, we get a hundred and fifty-five thousand a year out of that. Commissary, about seventy-three thousand. The Meals on Wheels, that's something that was put in place years ago. Meals on Wheels, the Pitt County pays the, the county fourteen thousand dollars a use of our kitchen, and they just basically do that at the end of our cooking our meals. No extra costs on the county. And that just basically shows some of the highlights and things we've done this year in participation in the community. And this time, that concludes my presentation, and I'd like to take any questions or comments you'd like to say at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your present, your presentation. At this time, we'll start on the right and work the other way. Commissioner Farley.
Yes, Sheriff Fells, you're, you are seeing a hundred and fifty percent increase since two thousand and eleven in the concealed carry permits.
Yes, sir.
I noted that. Very pleased to see that. And of course, that's revenue.
Right.
Is there any reason you couldn't round that off to a hundred dollars and every five years? Just mail a bill out? You would be notifying the person, and probably more than ninety-five percent would respond because if you missed that window, you gotta go through everything all over again.
Well, the state sets that fee.
Yeah.
And we do mail out copies to everybody. Sometimes the addresses and the mail carrier may fail to get those notices out, but, but by, by the rules of the S B I, that we have to mail those out to the, to the community.
Could, could not you also send an email or a phone call, just two avenues of notification?
We could, but there you're gonna get into staffing. You know, now you're gonna, how much, how much time you're gonna require my, my staff to do? I would be glad to. I mean, I think it's a better service.
And I commend the way you have the applications online and things, and emails are free, so I, you know, I'm just saying that would be a good thing because I do think you have that on record. But anyway, thank you for the great way you are handling that program.
Yeah, I would like to provide all the, the better service that we can to our community. Everything is cost-driven and time-driven, and when you got a woman that sits there and does this all day long, you know, she does try to take time to call people. We had, then we had to call them and tell them the permit's in as well, so we have to notify them to come in. You'd be surprised when we make that call to come in, we can't even get up with the people. Some of them sit there three or four months waiting for people to come pick them up. But, you know, we've made several considerations. I've had people tell me, so, they have said hours to do it. We didn't even consider doing it maybe on a Saturday morning once a month, you know, but it's something, we've had people that are volunteering, want to come in and work on a Saturday. But I'm all about providing that service to the citizens. If it makes them be able to come in and get a gun permit, I've actually come in personally and, and assisted two or three people on a Saturday that just work out of town to get their concealed carry permit. I just feel like if they entitled to it, by God, I'm just willing to give it to them.
Thank you.
That it? Mr. Garris?
Thank you very much, Sheriff, for what you and your organization does for our community. We do appreciate each one of you because we know that you have a tremendous responsibility, and we appreciate that. The detention center, opening this, this wing, and I know we've been talking about that for the last several years.
Yes, sir.
On a scale of one to ten, how strongly do you feel that we need to open that now? On a scale of one to ten, ten being very, very strong, one, we can wait without a problem? How strongly do you feel about that? I've seen your numbers and...
Yeah. Last year, I think our numbers were more pressing. This year, we're right at the borderline of needing some. It just bothers me when I get a phone call from my mom that her son is having to sleep on the floor. Sometimes we got twenty and thirty people on the floor. And like I've told the manager, we worked really hard to turn the people out of the facilities that we can, but we, we are housing more violent offenders now waiting for trial. It's almost like you can't stir that pot no more and get rid of ten or fifteen, twenty more. They're like, everybody's there now is, is for long-term stay. They could be there for a hundred, and they could be there for two hundred. We got people that have been there four years waiting for trial. So what I'm saying is, getting those little ones out, getting them out of electronic monitoring, they don't exist no more. We're, we're ready to, and, and the attitudes of the inmates is so strong. We've, we've had so many threats made from the jail. These gang members are in jail, and we really had to keep them separated. It's a full-time job, these classification officers, keeping these people where they need to be. To answer your question, I think it's something we need to look at, if no later than January. I think we need to be prepared because it's gonna take me months to get people hired. It's a task to get these people hired. I mean, I can't hire them today. I get all my guys, "Can't you do it in thirty days? Can't you do it in sixty days?" It takes a good, because we do, we do home visits. We, we stimulate three representatives that they didn't give us, you know? And we hold our officers to a higher standard. My officers are not even allowed to pass a note in the jail. And we will get terminated for passing a note. You get terminated for making phone calls for our, for the inmates. They always say, "Hey, I know you, go call somebody." We, I tell them, I said, "Don't get involved with these inmates." And so, they earn a lot of pressure too, but, you know, like I remind them, you know, they're there for a reason, but be careful. So we require our officers to really be the best of the best. And like I said earlier, they get, don't get recognized, and I'm really ashamed of And like I said earlier, they get, don't get recognized and I'm really ashamed of that. They do a great job. But I think no later than January, February, we really need to start looking at a way of getting the green light to go forward. Because if you told me in January to start, it'd be two or three months before I could get people hired. If you want to do January, I'd love you to give me the green light, October to start looking for applications and start processing.
So if we did it in January, these numbers we see here would be halved, right?
Just keep in mind July, one, you're going to make up another 50%.
I know. I understand. I, well, at some point in time, we're going to have to do that anyway.
I will give you my word. I will work hard to make sure that we take advantage of the feds and, and we can participate in the misdemeanor program. It's more work on us, but I know the county needs the extra revenue to, to meet that need.
My primary concern, and, and I don't want this to seem to be insensitive. My primary concern is not for your residents, but it's for your offices. And I know that they are not in a very pleasant environment, not a friendly environment, and that, and that is my concern. The fact that some of your residents have to sleep on the floor, I'm sorry, but I'm not overly sympathetic to that. I'm sympathetic to that officer that is going to be abused because of that.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other thing, I must say that I want to thank you too, Sheriff, for your, your service to citizens of Pitt County. One thing that I've heard so many times coming from citizens is that they appreciate the seniors, appreciate the, the service that you give to them in terms of coming to the homes and visiting them. I have a few friends who've called me and, and said it's been life-saving. I'm also appreciative of your 14% crime reduction in your rate. The other issue is what Mr. Garris stated. This is something that is very dear to me. As you know, there's a national cry for prison reformation and treating inmates as, as humans, not as animals. I think that if you start treating inmates with a sense of respect and dignity, you will see a lot of these crimes and other things decrease. I'm certainly for the idea of, of having a, a reformation in our detention center. To get these inmates off the floor and, and, and put them in a, in, in, in a position where they can at least be treated humanely. So I, I, I listened to you. As you said, by January, we need this. I think that there's a, there's certainly a, a need of, of prison reform. And I also thought I heard you say that it will increase your federal inmates population that would cause more revenue to come in, in terms of that. So I think this is something that's, that's dear to me, that we want to see and, and, and do what's best for, 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 for the, the department in terms of our overall inmates reduction from the floor.
Right. And just to echo on what you just said, you know, if, if I'm faced with an overcapacity next year, I have no choice but to cut back 10, 15, 20, 50 federal inmates to be in guidelines of what the state requires me to do. So the question you, you need to answer is, do we want to maintain where we are on our feds or is, do we feel like we, it's okay for us to lose the money on the federal inmates? Because I can't put, can't house but so many. And when the feds find out I'm overpopulated, they ain't going to send them to me.
Thank you. Ms. Ford.
Yes, I'd like to thank all of you and all the officers and administrative help that's here with you today.
Thank you.
For the job that we do and the presentation that you made. I just have a few observations. One is a lesson I learned at the first budget workshop that I attended. I think at that time, we were sitting around tables out there. I'm not sure. But I learned a lesson about recurring expenses and non-recurring expenses. Took me just a little while for that to settle in and I'm a person who has handled a lot of different budgets, certainly nothing the size of what the county has to handle. But that hadn't ever quite set in because I was usually the one asking for money. So when I would want another position in one of the schools that I was in, I wanted that position because my teachers and everybody saw that I needed that as far as what it, and they were behind me in requesting it. So we have to be very cognizant of the fact that I was just tagging the ones on the sheet, some of them. And every one but two of them are recurring expenses and many of them at 210,000, 252,000, 100. So that means that if it was approved this year, then we've got to have the money for it next year and in the future until that's taken away again. So I'm just sharing that as a lesson that I learned. The, my other question, and I know I've heard this before, but if you had the number of officers you're supposed to have in your jail, whether they're overtime or, you know, the bodies, how many per inmate or how many inmates per person on an average do you usually have?
I'm going to ask the major to answer that.
It's affected on, on population, but as it stands right now...
Yeah, but just an average of your population, kind of on that blue chart we had.
The average population now is running anywhere from 485 to 495. We're projecting that to increase ever so slightly as the months increase.
Right, but just give me kind of an average.
Per officer and inmate ratio.
Right.
I'm going to say 18 to 24 inmates per one officer.
18 to 24 per one.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that's on a fluctuating scale.
Okay, I got you. Okay. And I also wanted to point out again, and I know it's been said before and you acknowledge it also, the new facility that we're looking at as far as, and I think you referred to them as misdemeanors. That we're now having to house, you know, that we're going to intervene with that. And I know that's not immediate, but I think we really have to keep that in mind when we're looking at a total annual budget this year, next year, whenever it comes into play. Because that's one of the things that appeals to me so much because I think it will be a true service, you know, to the... Oh, I know, but I'm just saying that once we get the facility built, that, that they may not ever get to you, those people that now you're having to deal with. So, and, and I remembered hearing some numbers, but I don't know what they are. And I know that's not right now, but I know that that's something we need to think about. And the one other thing is the comparison of a county law enforcement. We have a lot more responsibilities.
Yes, ma'am.
Than any city or municipality police department. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. The sheriff has more responsibility.
Well, I understand, I understand looking at it that way as far as salary, but I also look at it at, to the amount of money we have to invest in a much, much, much larger program than you have, and I use program loosely, but than you have in a city, you know, or a municipality.
Right.
And that to me is, and I know you alluded to comparing to counties out west. I'm not sure of the state. I'm not sure, but I feel like there may be some kind of comparison that we could get. I'd like to have it. We may already have it of a county our size. And, and I think not just the size, but I think kind of what I was hearing, the sheriff, what is that county dealing with where they are? Do they have a, a university, you know? Because, and I know all of those things play in the jobs that you all have to do. So I'm just kind of asking them if they could, you know, get that for us without a lot of trouble.
Well, we've done several, we've done several studies as well and we can put you something together. Thing I want you to compare to, and I heard Commissioner Webb say the other day, was this is where your market is. This is where our cost of living really encourages, and this is who I'm competing against. I want to get the third and fourth and fifth choice officer. I want to get the top officer because we cut down on liability, we cut down lawsuits, and we keep an image of professionalism in our community. And we know how important it is in law enforcement now.
Right, and, and I understand that and I appreciate your alluding to that. And, and I look out and I see them and I know a lot of them and I think you've done a wonderful job myself. And I appreciate them sticking with us. Thank you.
They've been very dedicated.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Mr. Owens.
Sheriff, on page five of the material you presented us to the performance highlights, I think that's commendable of what your whole attitude and your whole production has been. Of course, when crime is down, as you indicated here, whether it be violent or nonviolent, it's an indication that your program and your officers advocate and bring about what we're looking for. That's very commendable. I don't expect an answer to, to day on it, but on page seven of the same thing, you requested four parole, four deputies. The manager showed here did not recommend it, but those four deputies' average cost was about $92,000.
That includes a vehicle?
I know, I know, but, oh, I know, but it's 92,000 per, per deputy. You turn over to the number page nine and the detectives, where the manager did recommend, is about 68,000 total income, total cost, lack of a better term. That's about a $25,000 variance. Does that run true in your total organization, Sheriff?
Well, it depends on if it's a position that's going to require additional equipment or vehicle. That's basically the vehicle cost in that. The additional you're seeing in the 56,000, it's basically, it'd be four cars, five cars, it, four cars at $25,000 a piece. That's why I said, I think we could sharpen that up a little bit and maybe get by a couple till next year's budget on some, some vehicles.
And the two, the two we're bringing on the pretown...
They already have, they already have weapons, weapons, guns, uniforms, cars, training.
I do note that one of those is, is where you had used your professionalism getting grants.
Yes, sir.
This one here that I think the manager, if your indication is correct, is going to continue that for you, which, which is very good.
Yes, sir.
But they did jump out at me, $25,000 difference between version of positions. Thank you.
Mr. Coulson.
Well, I may be here for a while because I've got a lot of questions. The advantage of being last is, as you ask questions, I think I've more.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I heard that you're going to make all the rest of us obsolete and you're going to take over. He was just joking about it. Anyway, the living wage part. Since I ran first in 1998, I have argued that the sheriff's department and the employees there do not make enough money. And be prepared for gasp from this board and also from the public that's probably going to scream at me because they're going to call me a liberal. But if it means getting more money through an increase in taxes to pay these people what they're worth, I'm for raising taxes. Take a big sigh. Yes, I'm a Republican and I am pretty conservative. I run a business. I have to manage it. But Sheriff, if you're getting third and fourth and fifth picks of sheriff deputies, I'm going to tell you, even before people recognized me as a county commissioner, I have never met a deputy that did not act professionally. Not one time. They are some of the best people we have in this county and they deserve more. And yes, if it means that, then I'm ready to raise taxes. They deserve a living wage. And when they are, when you see a nine and eight and $12,000 difference in pay between the city who does not have anywhere near the responsibilities the sheriff's department does, how many, how many of the papers that are served around the county are served by the cities?
They just basically serve their subpoenas and they'll...
Who, who takes care of the courts?
We do.
Who takes care of the jails?
I do.
When people are arrested in the city of Greenville, where do they take them?
Detention center.
The problem is, is that we have, we have, we have cities that have got funding revenues that come to them that we don't have access to. It's just like with, with the Greenville Utility Corporation and their higher rates. A portion of their money, a certain percentage, actually goes to the city as a line item. I call it that anyway, is they, they'll argue that it's not, but, but it's a revenue that we don't have access to. I noticed on here where you were asking for, this is another subject near and dear to my heart, 370,692 projected to be able to go after gang activity. You've heard me say that before on this board. I think we as Pitt County need to attack gangs in the sense of making it the most unhospitable place to where they don't want to be here. What is the cost of us not doing it? And I suggest, manager, that you find that money. I think that that money needs to be found. I did not see any reference in here for body cameras or things like that. Do you have any line items that would cover body cameras?
Yes, sir.
With the, with the problems that are happening across this country and the evidence that is needed that could be found in a body camera, there needs to be a line item to cover that. I'm going to ask again, what is the potential cost to this community in not doing so? Federal prisoners, according to about third or fourth page from the end, it looked like federal prisoners, you get about $78 a day.
Yes, sir.
So if we had 50 more federal prisoners, if you could attract that, and I know that can ebb and flow, the opening up of the, of the, the new, the new section could be potentially paid for by those 50 people. And that would give you another 42, 40, whatever beds. It would seem to me that we would want to encourage that. But if we don't open it, you can't attract them, can you?
Yes, sir.
So therefore, it's up to us to decide, do we want to open it? But then you would have to paint the picture, what's the probability of getting those federal prisoners in here if we did go to that expense? The, the cost of overtime versus the cost of hiring other deputies. Sometimes you need overtime, but if it becomes a consistent problem of overtime, then that means you've got a lack of staffing. It means you've got to do something. And the question is, is overtime budgeted? And you're, you have a certain amount, you, you have your budget and you say that next year, you're going to have so much in overtime. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I had it on slide.
Okay, but if you had adequate staffing, you may not need that and you could have more people, which would account for hiring some of these other additional positions that you are asking for.
Certain positions like at the detention center, they have an amount of overtime they have to pay, just like the six hours for the telecommunications. So we do budget there overtime and that's...
They're required to come in 15 minutes early and stay 15 minutes over every day.
But we do budget that.
But I have that same problem where I work, but we work around that and we don't have overtime. And that's because of the way we staff our people. You have more than I do, but the principle could still be. You're talking about an 18 to 24 to 1 ratio in the jails, inmates to officers. But it actually, something that just occurred to me earlier, is you got 12-hour shifts?
Yes, sir.
That's what I've been told. So that really means, how many officers do you really have? Because of the prisoners, you're going to end up having two because you've got to cover 24 hours a day. And because you've got 12-hour shifts, now you can't, you can't work them but so many days a week, so now double that more. So really, what is the cost of us incarcerating people when we could be doing more to prevent a lot of the crime? And I don't see in our budget here, a lot of money or fluff for you to be able, I shouldn't call it fluff, that's a wrong word, extra money for you to be able, flexible money would be a better word, for you to be able to deal with crime at its source. So what are we doing? It seems to me that we're behind the curve. It's like a snowplow going down the road and it's collecting snow in front of it and at some point, it spills over. And I think that's where we are as a community. I mean, you can paint a picture about crime being down and this, that and the other, and that may be true for today, but that doesn't mean it's going to be later. And I'm going to go back to the gang issue. I cannot imagine us not having a program that directly attacks gang activity. We have MS, well, I won't go through in that. We, we've got a lot of, all the, we've got all the bad gangs. All of them are here. And if we don't fund it, all we're doing is encouraging them to be bad players and continue to be bad players. So I would encourage that we as commissioners, think about these people, could you live on a sheriff deputy's wage? Could we, anybody on this board, live on those wages? I have no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. Mr. Webb.
I agree. Being last, it really does kick it up a bit.
You also have three minutes.
All right, first of all, Sheriff Elks, as one of the new people on the board, I haven't ventured into any aspect of your department, plan to.
Welcome.
But I like to say that your department has preceded you through the presence of your officers. And I like to say that, and I'm just hearing people in the community, they are pleased with the respect that your officers have given. And I was in a setting where there was a lot, sometime we need to praise, give folks some good, good things, where officers, people from out of town came in and talked about how the individuals handled themselves. And I was very impressed with their comment about your personnel and that's a good thing. Now, the fact that you got a lesser, I don't know how you do it, but that's good. I'm concerned about the overall national emphasis. And who are you right there, the young lady with you? I'm sorry.
It's Miss Donna Preston. She's my office manager. She handles all the money in the sheriff's office.
Oh, she's the office manager. Okay.
Business manager, excuse me.
Beside every man, there's a good person. I, I like to say that...
Sorry, you can't live without...
Yeah, she's my left hand. I got my right hand, too.
The overall picture that's being plain, painted by national media these days say that this county doesn't have a choice other than to come up with body cameras or something because complaints can easily come. because complaints can easily come. And it helps. It would help the officers who needs it. And I think they, they're good folks. Uh, I've seen them in different settings, and I really think they're good people, and yes, they need to, to do something, something. You all pointed out some good points, and I don't know too much about your department, but I do know that there is a criticism about gangs in this county. And I concur with the comment that people are saying, and they are almost afraid to bring it up. The city of Greenville had a gran, a gang program or something, and officers in training, and I'm amazed that you, you don't have that in your budget, and it needs to be. There are visible signs that they exist, and people who come from other communities, and we have a very high influx of, what you call it, transit people, where they come in and move in all the time, they, they share signs, I, I didn't know about it until they started pointing them out and showing, and sharing it with me as I moved throughout the county. So it, he's right about the presence is here, and it concerns me. I want to ask one question that I really don't know about, and that is, are, is the juvenile detention, it came up before you got here, 'cause you got a lot of folks in over there, but it came up before you got here, is the juvenile detention center under your department or under your whatever?
No, ma'am. It's under the state of North Carolina.
Huh?
It's under the state of North Carolina, the juvenile detention centers.
It's under the state of North Carolina. The funding and everything come under that. But if something happens over there, do you police it?
Yes, ma'am.
What does it fall, as it relates to your department and juvenile, that center over there?
If they have an emergency, we respond to their emergency. Um, we would investigate any crime. We would assist them in escapes. We're basically their law enforcement, if they were to call for, and some support or whatever. We don't do no transport for them. They do their own. Um, they're just located in our county. But we do, we have responded to fights out there. We have responded to a situation that needed some help quick out there.
That was, the juvenile center was referred to from the school to the thing in the last session as well. My question to Scott and Dwayne, do we get any, uh, resources or compensation for providing the safety of the community as it relates to housing? That some of the children are nice, you know, and some of them are not so nice. So where does that fall into?
Those are all, that's a state institution. There's no, there's no cross pollination of money between county government and the state.
And the state does not.
As a matter of fact, we actually have to pay.
You have to do what?
We pay to house juveniles from Pitt County in any state juvenile detention center. Every month.
Do y'all know that?
Yes, only through the schools.
In my training, they talk about what is mandatory about the sheriff department and the schools, which is a hu- huge chunk of the budget, and they tell me that we don't have any choice about it. But yet, the state is housing the, some of their problem with us, and we don't have any say in it. I didn't know that till I'd be talking to these legislators. I'd been fussing a long time ago. That, 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 that is something else. Why I like the taxes being down, Commissioner Colson. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but, and I'm not for raising taxes, but I think, uh, this is a very important department, and, um, I'm gonna visit the department of whatever, so that my knowledge base will be better. I must say that my knowledge base isn't, what I've learned is come from your officers and the community. And, um, we do need the cameras, and we knew, we do need some up-to-date attention for this department. And I don't know what, but up-to-date, I know they don't have body cameras. And I even asked the sheriffs that come through the river road, y'all wear, uh, what did I say? What's, what's this?
Book of Predest.
I ask them all the time about that and other things, and, and they do answer. Uh, and I ask them about the dogs. And, uh, it seems as if we spend more money on the residents' dogs than we do their dogs. And those are good dogs. So I don't have a problem with dogs, but I think we have a problem with where we pay, place our importance at this board and in this community. I'm finished, Dave Hamon.
Mr. Hamon.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Williams. This chairman, I'm sure she was right. Two of her officer, Lieutenant Kip, and that, and that big captain that's sitting over there with him, came over this morning and spoke, and we conversed for a minute. But I'm not dealing with that right now. I have a fish stooge commander that is one of my personal friends that lives in Dillon, South Carolina, where a refrigerator that used to play with the Chicago mother lived. In fact, his mother is his, refrigerator's mother was his aunt. And I used to pastor part of their family when I was in La Grange. And he told me to tell you, don't you go up to Raleigh and buy them all that junk. He got two 2,000 Crown Vix police package, 399s, 697s, and 196. And they're all under 100,000 miles, that he tends to himself, 'cause he operates the garage. And when he comes up here, his mama used to send me, send me a great big bowl of rock stew, a puppy drum one, and he do up here most of the day now, and I hope you get a chance to meet him. He's from South Dillon, South Carolina, where he has worked with the, uh, municipal garage for many years. And he can build a Ford. Frank that drives Eagle cab, he has met him and know him too. He told me that these vehicles that he have, he don't lie, he don't lie to the officers to wear them out before he goes to administrate and tell them, take these, these going up. If he tell them to take them off the road, they're took off the road, and they, they don't operate no more for law enforcement business. But anyway, he said, "Reb, I got 90 pounds of rock and 30 pounds of puppy drum and plenty of potatoes." So you just be, so when Isaleen get there, at that nursing home or wherever you at, just let, just let her know that you ready, you ready to go and ready to eat when you get here. But anyway, uh.
Donate them?
I didn't forget. No, they, no, they ain't donated.
I thought he was gonna say he was gonna donate you those cars for under 100,000 miles. I thought that's where he was going.
No, 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 no. That's the sheriff, that's the sheriff's department, and he'll have to do that. But he, he, he was told that you went to Raleigh, and he said, "Don't you go up there no more." He told me if I had to bring you down there, or if you have to drive your car to get down there, he'll, he'll make sure that you're treated right. And, uh, but what I was interested in now was these 90-pound rock fish and these 30-pound of puppy drum. If he tell me to bring a bush of potatoes, I'm gonna carry them down there and, uh, see can we operate from that, from, from that perspective. But 196 has had 85,000 on them, and he got 697 Crown Vix, 399 Crown Vix, and two 2,000, all on police packages, and all of them slick. And told me to tell you, if you, if you need a, a used police package or Ford, to let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Hamon. Ms. Sheriff, appreciate your presentation. I think everybody's pretty much covered it. I didn't want to touch on the body cameras, 'cause they weren't in there. And, and I just want to, just a point of clarification on them is that, uh, I think part of the reason they're not in there is 'cause this is a technology that's outpacing policy. It's new, and, uh, the policies that would conduct their use haven't been fully developed. Uh, also, the, some ancillary problems, not problems, but issues that come up with them, are storage, and you have to have someone to be a custodian of the, uh, information that is, is caught on the cameras, because all of that information is gonna be available under Freedom of Information Act. And, uh, those of us who've had to give over emails know how aggravating that can be at times, when you have to go through and, and pick out everything that's department-related and then... So I, I think what they're doing is working on policy before they go after the equipment, and it looks like there's gonna be federal funds for the equipment. And through our, our national association, state association, what we're asking the state and federal government to is to not just send the equipment, but send the storage capacity. 'Cause you're talking about a lot of server space, and just storing regular information takes up a lot of space. And, and Mr. Taylor's probably much, could give you much better, um, ideas about that than I do. But storing a video takes a lot of space. So storing 12 hours of video per day by two officers, you know, and, and if they're not sharing, you know... How many officers do you have total? In Greenville, we have 180-something officers, so if we all had 180 body cameras.
I got about 160 sworn.
160 sworn officers by 12 hours of video is a lot of storage space. So it's just a technology that's outpacing, uh, policy and the ability. And I think that curve's gonna catch up quick, though I don't think it'll be a big delay in those things. Uh, Sheriff, I want to thank you too for your community outreach. Part of the issue, I think, with, um, the body cameras and the, and the outcry forum is it's mainly coming from communities that don't trust their law enforcement officers. I think, uh, the department I work for has done a good job. I think your department's done an excellent job in building trust in your community, so that when you do have an incident, you've had two officer-involved shootings. We don't have what you see in other areas, because you've made that outreach to people, the public in general, and they trust you. And I, I don't think there's any higher praise from the public than to trust the people that are, are charged with policing them. So I appreciate that, but that, that'll be it for my comments. I think everybody else pretty much covered it, so we appreciate you coming.
I can have a closing comment?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the commissioners for recognizing the great job that Pitt County deputies do. They are dedicated employees. They love what they do. That's why they choose that profession. Appreciate you taking into consideration modifying salaries or equipment, whatever. And, uh, your comments have made me feel very proud to be the sheriff today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have the elections. I don't know why I think they're counting them just fine.
Dave talked about the rock fish, and maybe, huh, what time is it?
This is down the road.
I'll be very brief. Um, this is the first time we've actually, at least in my tenure with elections, that we've had to come to the workshop. Reason being is, just with the nature of our election cycle, like this coming fiscal year, we're gonna have a municipal, then a primary. But the reason we're coming up this year is we have something new. Uh, we haven't seen since 1976 and 1988 is a presidential preference primary. Uh, the way the law is right now, from 2013, uh, it was the bill, the law that incorporated the photo ID, One Stop, and all that, uh, set up a presidential preference. And the way that law is, is it all hinges on South Carolina. It's gonna be the Tuesday following South Carolina's first presidential preference primary. South Carolina bases theirs on New Hampshire. New Hampshire's waiting on Iowa. So we're still at this point, we don't even know when anybody has set their presidential preference. Uh, but we know it's gonna be coming. There's been, uh, pressure from both parties, national parties, because it violates, uh, their national laws or national rules. Essentially, South Carolina usually has theirs in February. And the way both parties have their national rules set up is there's only set states that can have theirs in February. So if they do theirs early in February, and we do it that Tuesday afterwards, we violate the rules. And that may have been where you hear that I know with the Republican Party, uh, they were talking about taking 70-some delegates down to 12 at the national convention. So what has happened is, uh, in Raleigh, the legislators have stepped back and introduced another bill, and it's passed through the House to set the presidential preference as the Tuesday following the first Monday in March. Right now, it sounds like that's making both parties happy. Uh, it would be March 8th of next year. Uh, so we have a pretty good feeling that that's gonna be the date for our presidential preference. Uh, what that means is the cost of a whole new election. We're gonna have municipal, thankfully, the municipality reimburs us for that. We put on the election form, we send them a bill, they pay us for it. Uh, the primary election next May, we're still gonna have, three of y'all, if, if you run again, I'm sure you will, would be on, possibly on that ballot. But we're also gonna be looking at a March presidential preference. Uh, and you see in the information that provided to you, just a comparison of the difference. You see in '76, we saw 38% turnout. Uh, in '88, saw 35%. If you look at the flip side, down, you see the 2010 midterm, 16% turnout, 2014 midterm, 15% turnout. So there's a huge difference between having a presidential preference and a midterm. So what we predict is gonna happen is you're gonna see, uh, probably upper 30s, 'cause we're going back to 1988, you could see the registration then was just 45,000, and it's now at 111,000. And turnout has increased dramatically over the years. So it wouldn't surprise me to see 40% turnout for a presidential preference. But what you'll see then is in that May primary, you're gonna see it drop back down to that 15-some percent. Um, and what you see in the other, the pie chart there that I have for you, that presidential preference, we're estimating is gonna cost about 144,000 when you round it off. Uh, most of that is involved in personnel. You see, uh, in the blue section with One Stop and the red with Election Day. We have to have people operating the One Stop sites, people operating the Election Day precincts. Uh, it can vary depending on the precincts. With Creek, we have as few as four people work there. You know, that's, everybody knows everybody. They come in, they go. It's, you know, it's just a steady flow all day, and that's what they operate with. We have others where they need as many as 10 or 11 poll workers. Uh, you have to have, uh, poll workers there to check them in for both One Stop and Election Day. Uh, you have to have some people there to hand out ballots, also to cover the machines, help with curbside, help with provisional voting. Next year, when this occurs, we'll also have the photo ID, which we're still getting the procedures from the state board as far as the steps and the process we're gonna follow with that. Uh, so we could possibly need, uh, one or two more people per, uh, poll in place. We'll see what the state board tells us. The other big chunk you see there is the ballots, uh, 31,000, rounding off to 32,000. Um, that involves the actual paper ballots itself, as well as the coding for the voting machines. Uh, we have to, by law, have 100% of ballots on hand. We know we won't ever have 100% turnout, but the law says you have to have a ballot for every person, just in case. And what has happened is, in North Carolina, because of unaffiliated voters having the option to select which party they want to participate in, we have to actually order more than 100%. Because an unaffiliated voter comes in, they could pick any one of the three parties or a nonpartisan ballot. So for that unaffiliated voter, I need to have four ballots on hand. I talked with a colleague about two weeks ago, who had previously worked in Wake County Elections Office. He said their standard procedure is they order 200% of the registration for ballots, 'cause they have no, they're much larger than us, but they have no clue as to how that unaffiliated voter's gonna vote. Then you have to spread those ballots out throughout the whole county. Uh, so that is that cost there. You have post-election and pre-election costs, that's basically just prep. Uh, you see 3%, 9%, so you're basically looking at the manpower to put this on. Uh, we feel pretty confident. We've heard some discussion that it could be later in March, but it's looking like it's gonna happen. March 8th is when it's gonna be. And I just opened it up to any questions y'all have. Just wanted to prepare y'all for this. I believe Scott included it in the budget.
Good, Mr. Manager.
We do not have this included in the budget.
Oh, okay.
We did include the, um, the second primary cost of about 73,000, as you recall. But this, at this point, is not included, 'cause we didn't know what was going on, how the legislation was tracking in Raleigh. So this is potentially another 144,000.
Another? How much did you say?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, it's the other way around. The presidential preference is in, but the second primary is not. Okay, thank you.
So, how much?
Not knowing if we need the second president, the second, uh... We need the second president, the second primary. So this is in there.
Isn't there potential for a bond this fall as well that would fall under this next budget?
Yes, sir. And that could, that could hurt us too financially, because the way we have municipal agreements with all 10 municipalities to put on the elections. If there is a county or federal issue on the ballot as well, then the costs are proportionally based. So it's going to reduce their responsibility as far as how much they have to pay the municipalities, and we're going to have to pay some ourselves.
Won't we have to open all the county polling places for the...
For us, it will only add two more precincts, Chicot and Swift Creek. Those are the only two we have that don't have any municipal voters.
Okay. Well, we'll do the same thing. We'll go left or right, since we're going back and forth. Mr. Hamon, do you have any questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Miss Williams?
None.
This is the easiest one yet.
Is this presidential preference thing a federal law?
No, sir. No, sir. This is something that has been discussed for several years about doing. Back before 20, I think the last time it was mentioned was in 2011. And the national party said, "If you do it, we're cutting your delegates for the national convention." So they backed off. But in 2013, when the Viva Bill, the Voter Information Verification Act, when that was put in, they put in having a presidential preference. They decided to go into it. The legislators in Raleigh.
In Raleigh? So this applies to North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't understand it. It looks to me like it is extremely inefficient. Why wouldn't we have the presidential preference the same time we have the primary and eliminate this $140,000 for one county and we got 100 counties? I can't believe our legislators did that.
It's an attempt to get...
Mr. President of the NCACC.
I'm not president of the legislature. It's an attempt to get all the advertising dollars and visits in from the presidential candidates for those 76 delegates.
But that's not going to help us in Pitt County reimburse us for that $143,000 that our taxpayers have to come in.
They're not worried about us, Jimmy.
That's ridiculous.
Mr. Chairman, I appoint, nominate Mr. Garrett to go and take care of that tomorrow. But Jimmy, if the chairman permit, there is a move in the General Assembly to do exactly what you're talking about.
We need to support that and say, "This is ridiculous."
We're also, there's a move in the association to get rid of second primaries, because the cost to the counties and run it in a simple majority. If you get a plurality of the votes, if there's more than two, then winner-take-all.
Second primaries, they're not as expensive as these elections, but when you look at it, the cost per voter, because the turnout is so pitiful, it's really winds up being more expensive per voter to do a second primary.
Dave, a certain amount of money is allocated to the respective political parties based on the number they have registered. What do they do with the unaffiliated? No money goes to anybody?
I don't know. That's something they're going to have to address.
If you're unaffiliated, you should only be able to vote for the Libertarian Party. That's just my...
And that's something I think the parties are going to have to address at some point, because you see in North Carolina, every year, unaffiliated rate is going up and up. So I think probably they're going to address it through that or through the primary, wind up closing the primaries.
I said something that made sense. I'm done.
Thank you. Well, I think that's it. We appreciate your presentation.
I can't believe he is with the shortest thing up there.
Were there any closing remarks by anybody, any directives that they wanted to give out? Or do you want, we'll wait till we get all the presentations in. I think would be the best thing.
Chairman, I think that's a good suggestion that you're making. Let's get the other presentations, and then we can be in a posture to tell Scott and Dwayne what we're interested in.
I agree. So with that being said, what we will do is we will stand in recess until Thursday morning.
Thanks, sir.
Till Thursday morning. Good.